We will now pledge allegiance to the flag.
(Inaudible)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to lay out the plan for the meeting this evening.
Ms. Kelly, Ms. Kelly, may I just pose a statement? I'm Tom Leonard, 315 Madison Street. With all due respect, there are people lined up to Second Street. I think it's premature to begin the meeting.
Well, the question is how long do we wait?
In the interest of time and respect for the elected officials, I will begin with a review of the executive summary of the Act 47 exit plan for the city of Harrisburg. While I'm reading that, that would give time for those individuals who flow into the room. They're certainly welcome to come in. The executive summary is public. It's on the website, so they also have opportunity to review that executive summary online. Once I'm finished with the executive summary, I will invite the mayor, the president of council, all council members, the treasurer, the controller, and any other elected official which, whom might like to speak this evening. After they have concluded their speech or their comments, we will allow all citizens to provide comment, but there is a limit of three minutes for each speaker. At the conclusion of the three minutes, you'll hear a very soft timer indicating that your time has been expended. So, so we will, we will begin with the executive summary and follow that protocol. And I welcome everyone this evening, and we certainly welcome your comments and your input. It's very valuable to the process.
Would you mind introducing yourself, please?
I certainly shall. Just give me a moment. I was going to do that as soon as I was prepared to say the executive summary. My name is Marita J. Kelly. I'm the recovery coordinator for the city of Harrisburg as designated by Secretary Daven, and I am here to hear public comment on the plan that has been set before the city clerk and the mayor. And we hope to find that comment constructive and hope to move it forward as we move the process forward. Thank you.
Ms. Kelly, I have been asked by both the mayor and by Mr. Leonard, who is also the head of our zoning board and a legal counsel, that under the Sunshine Act, people do have the right to come in here and commence without them when they're trying to get in. It does seem to be contrary to the Sunshine Act. I mean, there are two different sets of requirements for public notice here, both the Sunshine Act and Act 47 itself. So, all I'm asking was, I've asked that just, I've been asked just to let the people arrive that are trying to get into this meeting. That is what I was just asked. So, I believe that is a reasonable and fair request based on the requirements of the law that apply to a public meeting. And I realize this facility is small, and I think the air conditioner shut off at 5:30, but, but, you know, we would, we would ask that the public be allowed to get into the room. We realize it's, it's our start time.
At approximately 6:00 PM, I will commence the meeting. I will give the 15-minute period. Okay, good evening. I believe we have everyone seated for the meeting, and we're ready to proceed. The mic is on. As I stated earlier, I'm Marita J. Kelly. I'm the recovery coordinator for the city of Harrisburg's Act 47 program. Just to reiterate the venue for this evening, all of the elected officials will have an opportunity to speak after I present the executive summary. After the elected officials have chosen to speak, then the public is fully invited to include their public comment, and each individual will have three minutes to speak. The three minutes are on a timer. You'll hear a gentle timer going off after your three minutes, and at that time, if you could step aside and let the next person have their opportunity to provide public comment. We'll try to move the meeting swiftly so that everybody will be comfortable, and we believe that this will be useful and helpful as we proceed through the exit process. Since 2010, the city of Harrisburg has effectively used the Commonwealth Act 47 municipalities' financial recovery program to make considerable operation and fiscal progress. The city has monetized assets, eliminated significant debt, increased service levels, accumulated a significant fund balance, and overall returned to normalcy. However, challenges remain. Act 199 of 2014, which was amended in 2014, provides a timeline and process for municipalities to exit the financial recovery program. In the case of Harrisburg, the five-year Act 199 timeline began with the issuance of the 2013 Act 47 recovery plan. In March 2018, the financial condition report prepared by the coordinator addressed the end of the five-year timeline by recommending that the city remain in Act 47 for additional three years. The exit plan considered the city's revenues and expenditure levels, debt, operations, labor strategies, in order to strengthen the city so that it is able to leave the Act 47 program on a time as a sustainable municipality. It is important to note that Act 47 requires the coordinator to prepare a plan that will ensure the termination of distress status at the end of three years. The greatest challenge facing the mayor and city council under the plan in Harrisburg is that the city will lose the extraordinary taxing ability when it exits Act 47 on September 21st, 2021. The plan outlines a multifaceted strategy to handle this loss of revenue through potential reductions in operating expenses, possible legislative changes to enable the extension of the Act 47 extraordinary taxes, consideration of home role status to lift statutory caps on certain taxes, restoration of investigative, I'm sorry, investment grade ratings in order to fund capital needs through long-term debt, and reduction of debt service obligations. Lastly, and to the extent that those strategies are insufficient, the city will need to generate additional revenue through real estate tax increases. The plan also reviews the final options over the city, has controlled and made appropriate recommendations. This requires an examination of the current tax structure of the city, a close look at the cash, and a thorough review of possible spending cuts. To replace extraordinary taxes, the city will need to make serious decisions regarding its long-term future. The most viable and stable revenue source available to replace the Act 47's extraordinary tax revenue is from the city's real estate tax assessment, as authorized under Third Class City Code. The city has at least two other options to pursue other than simply raising taxes. The city can consider a home role charter process that will give it options, including restructuring taxes. The city can also request that the state legislator grant the city authorization to continue the Act 47 extraordinary tax revenues after the city exits the program. The city will discuss those options with the legislature during a hearing scheduled later this fall. Meanwhile, to assist the city in managing the transition out of Act 47, the plan recommends that the city gradually restructure its tax revenue sources by steadily decreasing its earned income and local services tax over the plan's three-year term, while concurrently increasing its real estate tax mileage to provide sufficient revenue and eliminate its fiscal projected operating deficit. To ameliorate the impact of recommended property tax increases, the plan will allow the city to use a portion of the general fund balance to reduce the projected operating deficit in each fiscal year, but only to the extent necessary after taking into account the benefit of the initial, the initial plan for fund balance set forth. Other options for fund balance revenue include reduction of debt and capital spending. The plan also examines cost measures for all departments. Cutting costs while maintaining the same service level will be a challenge, however, it will help to reduce the increases in taxes. Finding the correct balance between raising taxes and cutting costs will be very difficult. The coordinator recommends that the city carefully examine the plan and its opportunities to leave distress. The plan is almost 90 pages. It's 88 pages and provides a substantial number of recommendations. It is important to emphasize that the city may maintain the extraordinary revenue as provided by the exit plan. As the city evaluates its options regarding the projected general fund operating deficits due to the loss of $11 million of Act 47 extraordinary tax revenue, the coordinator stands ready to evaluate any proposal set forth during the comment period. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to receive both oral and written comment from the public on the proposed exit plan. We will begin the meeting by first hearing from the members of the city officials, his honor the mayor, members of council, the council president, where did she go? Oh, there she is, and, and other elected officials. At the conclusion of the comments, we will receive comments from the public. Again, that comment period will be approximately three minutes. We cannot respond to questions tonight outside of clarifying items within the exit plan. We will consider all comments received for possible revisions to the proposed exit plan, which will be edited within the next several weeks. That is the conclusion of my executive summary. I think anyone that would like to see the full report, it is online at www.dced.paa.gov under Local Government, under Financial Recovery. And now, I'd like to invite his honor Mayor Papenfuss to speak on behalf of the city in relation to the exit plan. Thank you, Mr. Papenfuss.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Coordinator. I would like to just use a moment of my time to introduce Commissioner Carter and Chief Enterline. As the, one of the primary functions of any government is public safety, and the majority of the city's payroll is devoted to public safety, and as there are a number of initiatives in the plan that address public safety, I thought it appropriate to just begin by letting the police commissioner respond to the police initiatives in the plan, and the fire chief respond to the main fire initiative in the plan. And perhaps we'll start with Commissioner Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Ma'am, board, I want to thank all of the Harrisburg residents for coming out here tonight, for showing an interest, because this is big. This is really big. This is, is our future right here. Back in 2013, when I became acting chief, the receivership had stripped my agency down to 113 officers. 113 officers to police the city of Harrisburg, to fight crime, to help people, patrol the streets, and to render public safety services. We went from 175 officers down to 113 because of the Act 47 plan. Right now, we're at 144 officers, and I was reading the, the plan that they are asking Harrisburg to, to merge with other agencies. It's not possible. You will have to change the Third Class City Charter. You have to change the state pension, because township police boroughs and city police, they have different pension structures. What are you going to do? Are, are you going to bring Harrisburg, which is a large-paying agency, up to that standard? Or are you going to drop the township down? It's just not possible, and anything looks good on paper, but it's no plan for it. They didn't tell you how to do it, and you have to change the state law first. They talked about us going with the county forensics. I have forensics experts. We do a lot of forensics work in the city here, and what the county does not do. They talked about us merging with the county for a homicide team. We do all the homicides around here, not the county. We ask the county for help sometime, depending on what kind of homicide it is, but we do all the homicides here. You know, Harrisburg deserves better. These people here deserve better police protection, and they deserve more police officers. If you regional, if we regionalize with somebody, somebody's going to end up getting hurt, somebody's going to end up getting services taken from them, because you can't do both. You cannot do both. I believe that the people of Harrisburg, they're, they're, they're happy with the police here. I know that they want to keep their agency here. I know that the police care about the people here, and the people care about the officers here. It is just no way. It makes no sense, because I'm going to tell you that what's going to happen. If we go back into any receivership or anything like that, I'm going to lose the whole agency. I'm going to lose all my officers, because they're not going to put up with it anymore. We are the lowest-paid agency around here, but we got the best workers around here. I'm down to 144 officers right now. We got over 400 guns off the street. Crime is at its all-time lowest. I mean, you know, if we try to, since we handed township and swapped township for over 20 years, they've been talking about merging. They haven't done it yet because of the pension structures and because of people giving up power. It's nice to say that we can save 33%, but how? Where, where is the cost savings at? I don't know. I can't find it. I just think that we should be able to leave Act 47 keeping the same tax structure that we have right now. We're not asking for anything new. It's just the way that it is right now. It is not fair for the citizens of Harrisburg to have to pay higher taxes. For the business people have to pay higher taxes. That is not fair. And me, myself, and I, and I know that the mayor and city council feels the same way, we're going to fight with everything that we have to make sure that that does not happen. The citizens of Harrisburg had nothing to do with getting into this mess, and my God, they done suffered enough as it is, and they're not going to be the ones that suffer anymore. So, I just wish that, you know, I read this here perf plan. It's all filler stuff. That's all that it is. It means absolutely nothing. Was people that had nothing else to say. They say, well, you know, you can merge here, you can merge there. That'd be a cost savings. I went to a meeting, and they told us that the city and the townships that we couldn't merge, because they got to change state law. And now, all of a sudden, you know, we can merge. It makes no sense. It makes no sense. I'm going to give the floor to my captain right here. He wants to add a couple of things to it.
I think the commissioner pretty much nailed everything, but I'll go into a couple of the specifics. One of the things that was indicated was a 12-hour shift, that the department should shift from our eight-hour shift to a 12-hour shift. There's no consideration being given that for a 12-hour shift, we would have to actually double the amount of vehicles, double the amount of long weapons, tasers. There's a huge amount of officers that would be coming onto the one shift, and we're not prepared to have that many officers working at that point. We would have to actually expend money to get enough equipment to have that many officers working. That in itself is one problem. The second problem would be the court system. Right now, we have officers who get off a night shift and have to spend anywhere from two to five hours in court after they get off at 7 o'clock in the morning, before they can go home and go to sleep. If you start doing a 12-hour shift, when these officers are getting off at 5, 6, 7, 8 o'clock in the morning, they now have to spend anywhere between two and five hours in court, but yet they're expected to be back to work, fully rested, 12 hours after they left. Meanwhile, they spent so many hours in court. That's going to be a burden to our officers. Our officers respond to roughly 80,000 to 83,000 calls a year. There's no one else in the county that responds to that many calls. We respond to as many calls as the entire county does. The other closest cities to us, being York and Lancaster, do not have that kind of call volume. By switching to a 12-hour shift, we would be killing our officers. If you speak to any jurisdiction around here that has 12-hour shift, and you speak to their officers, they love the time off. But while they're working, that one, that one day off in between shifts, they sleep most of the day. You put that burden of all, of that work on the officers, you now create a dangerous situation. And you put on top of that the amount of court that our officers go to. It then becomes unsafe for not only our officers, but the citizens. And we have seen nationwide what happens when officers make mistakes. And we do not need to put our officers into the situation. We do not need to put our citizens in these type of situations. One of the things that was suggested was to merge our forensics unit. We have three officers. That's it, three officers. Those three officers handle 150,000 photographs of evidence each year. They process 50,000 to 60,000 fingerprints a year. Two of the three forensics officers are the only two in the region who are certified to run fingerprints outside of the state police. Because of that, we're able to run fingerprints within hours, not weeks, not months, hours. And that has helped us in many, many, many crime investigations. In the original report, the Act 47 report, there was discussion in there, we had too high of a clearance rate. We were doing too much good work, and they wanted a reduction of our staff. The staff was done. If you do the same thing with the forensics, where you merge them with the county, county's team is part-time. They come out for emergency situations. You may not be aware of the incident we had in December. They all mopped the incident. County team came in. We assisted them in that processing. Then they leave. Who handles the day-to-day work that those three officers handle? When that team leaves, there's still work to be done. And it's unfair to put that work on all the other officers, when we have three specialists that are recognized by the court as experts to do that work. The citizens would actually be losing that expertise, and it's unfair to all the victims I think the commissioner already touched upon the regionalization regarding the state legislator would have to change their class city law, which has not been done in decades. The merger would not be beneficial to the citizens of the city. We've already lost so many officers. At the end of our contract, we have the potential of losing 40% of our officers. 40% of our officers. If this plan goes through, you're pretty much assured that we will lose those 40% of officers. And then, we have 40% of our department has five years or less. If you lose that senior staff, who's going to be there to train our younger officers? Between the officers who are retiring and the officers who have lasted five years, that's 80% of our department. And that 40 that are retiring are the, are most senior officers, the ones that our citizens here have daily interaction with, who understand the community, who understand the nuances. They're the ones that lose. Thank you.
Like Chief Carter, I come in as the acting fire chief in 2013 under receivership. Our agency as well was depleted due to the Act 47 plan and the receivership. We were at 58 employees. We were on par to spend in excess of $3 million in overtime to backfill the positions that we needed to keep our firefighters safe on the streets, protecting our citizens every day. We have used the Act 47 plan as it currently sits with the taxing authority and been great steward to the money that was awarded to the fire bureau in our annual budgets to hire and cut those costs. Our overtime, I'm proud to say, is now $650,000 per year. The problem that we have now with this Act 47 plan as it sits, the three-year extension, is going to rip the ability to do any capital improvements. The fire bureau, the police bureau, and many other departments in this city were depleted of capital expenditures for decades, decades. I've been involved in the city fire department for 23 years. I'm proud of where I sit today, but I can tell you, I'm more proud of the work that we've been able to do in four short years, rebuilding the fire department with the capital expenditures and the rebuilding of the membership of the department. This department, when I first came here in the 90s, was 102 personnel. We have 85 right now, and we are taxed beyond belief because of the surrounding communities that are requiring our services on a nearly weekly basis. The current Act 47 plan suggests that we would bill our surrounding municipalities for fire protection. That currently is not legal either, and I don't know what we would do when we receive the bills from every one of our surrounding municipalities for services that they provide to us, when our department is in need, when we have a second or third alarm fire, or a incident like we have coming up this week with potential flooding, when we rely on our surrounding volunteer fire departments. As, as you should be well aware, the Commonwealth is in a significant decline in volunteers, and that has affected us in the city as well, and that's why staffing is so important to us. Back in the 1990s, we would get 20, 30, 40 volunteers to come into the city of Harrisburg on a second or a third alarm. We are lucky now to get 15, 18, 20 on that same alarm because of the dwindling number of volunteers. It is our take and our look with the Act 47 plan and taxing authority as it is, the services that we're providing to those surrounding municipalities is a win-win for everybody. But in no way should we be billing those municipalities for those services in, in an effort to try and make money. I believe that we actually were sued because we took money from surrounding suburban municipalities and tried to balance our budget with that. I think this is a bad plan, just specifically with the fire department, on trying to recoup money from surrounding municipalities for fire protection. We have a longstanding, not only Dolphin County, but inter-state mutual aid agreement where no municipality will bill the other for fire services. The, and I touched on it, one of the things that the, the plan has been able to do, and we've been able to rebuild, are our depleted fire stations. We just put roofs on fire stations that hadn't been touched in 30 years, and we were able to finally put roofs on so that our firefighters, while they're sleeping at night, while they're going out in the engine rooms, responding to the great citizens of this city and the surrounding area, aren't getting wet when it's raining like it was last night. We've, we've been able to rebuild and buy apparatus that we hadn't been able to do for, for ages. That apparatus cost, and, and one of the things that you need to factor in, when we have a depleted fleet, the cost for maintenance goes up, the cost for replacement goes up dramatically, and the reliability of that apparatus also goes down. There were times under receivership where we were running this city with three pieces of fire apparatus. It's absolutely unheard of and unconscionable that we would think of going back to a system where we would have three fire trucks in service, because we're not replacing them on a capital basis and ensuring that we have quality apparatus, enough firefighters, and enough personnel to assist the citizens of the city. We serve a community that is a great community. However, we have a lot of folks that can't afford tax increases. We understand that police and fire are a significant burden on the tax structure of the city. However, without us, the citizens are at risk. And I think we have to look at the taxing 100% And I think we have to look at the taxing, a hundred percent property tax increase. And I happen to be a resident of the city. I'm a proud resident since nineteen ninety-nine. And I, I look at my neighbors and I look at the people that I interact with on a daily basis. And whether that's on Buckthorn Street, or whether that's on the Hill, whether that's uptown on Penn Street, or whether that's out in Bellevue Park where I live, these folks cannot spend any more of their money on taxes. Where we will end up being is, folks are going to leave like they did after the nineteen-seventy-two In addition to that, once those folks leave, guess what? Those houses are still here and still my responsibility to protect, to keep the rest of residents safe. So when you, when we start looking at tax increases that are burgeoning at a hundred percent increase, when these folks can't afford it, this is going to be a city where everybody just leaves, and now we, as the firefighters and police officers of this city that are sworn to serve and protect, have to do it with next to nothing to work with, trying to protect the few citizens that are left. I believe that this plan has a ton of flaws in it. I believe that the taxing authority needs to stay. We have proven that with the LST increases that we have received over the last four years, we have been absolute phenomenal stewards of the money, not only in the fire department, but citywide. And that is what's made the city so successful in the last four years. And I just cannot understand or see where we would be ripping that out from underneath of us and going to a one-hundred percent property tax increase on not just myself, but all these great people, the city of Harrisburg, and we're not going to stand for it. Trust me.
Thank you to both police and fire for starting us off. I, I think that sets an important context here. And I think it also, it really shows some of the flaws in the plan, which is that the plan contains a lot of initiatives, but those initiatives not only don't work, but they end up, in many cases, costing the city more money than, than they save. I'm going to switch gears and take a slightly different tact because there are lots of officials here, and I think we all fundamentally agree on the problems. But before I do that, I do want to say, I have never seen anything like the outpouring of interest in commenting on this plan in the, in the past five years of Harrisburg. We had over a hundred-and-thirty people submit written, cogent, impressive comments on the plan. And I would note that all one-hundred-and-thirty, the people that commented through the city's website, recommend the rejection of the plan. Every single one of them believes that it will, would be a disaster for, for Harrisburg. And many of them have, have very important stories and perspectives to tell. So I'd like to at least start by submitting to you the one-hundred-and-thirty comments that came in through our website on the plan, and they can become a part of the official, the official record. The tact I want to take is, is that the, the exit plan does not comply with the law. And I want to be very clear, I don't believe that what you have done here is, is legal. If you turn to the law governing Act forty-seven and you go to the section which describes the contents of an exit plan, this is, for the record, it's Section two fifty-six, Section B of the law. It says that the contents of an exit plan, the exit plan prepared by the coordinator shall, key word, shall contain such elements as necessary to, and here's the key part, quote, "ensure termination of distressed status after three years." And I would put to you that this plan absolutely does not ensure the termination of the city's distressed status after three years. If anything, the city is more distressed after three years, and we will get into that in a minute. I'd like to sort of quote your own words in the plan as well, and I'll, I'll take you to page six of the plan. And you describe this plan not as something which is going to ensure termination of distressed status after three years, but you describe the plan as a, a plan which, quote, "will include the initial stages of a strategy." That's how you described the plan, the initial stages of a strategy. And it's that same language that you, you've taken from the original financial condition report as well. On page thirteen of that, you also talk about how it is something which is the initial stages of a strategy. The initial stages of a strategy is not something which ensures the termination of distressed status under the law. Now, the plan has basically six points, and if you go to page twenty-three of the plan, you do a good job of enumerating those six points. And I would argue that you can't ensure any of the six points in the plan. Let's look at them. You say, "This exit plan outlines a multifaceted strategy that relies on one legislative change to enable the extension of the extraordinary EIT and LST taxes after an exit from Act forty-seven." Now, I would say, absolutely, we strongly support that, and that's where we need to go. But your plan doesn't ensure that. In fact, you can't ensure that. Number two, consideration of home rule status, which could enable the city to maintain some or all of its extraordinary tax revenues. Again, I say, good to consider home rule status, but that is something that you cannot ensure. You can't even ensure the, the fact that the, the city would vote for it initially as an initiative on the ballot, or that it would vote for a revised charter eventually after eighteen months of study and planning by the commission. Those things cannot be insured. Point three, you talk about how the plan is going to bring about the restoration of investment-grade rating so that capital can be funded through the incurrence of long-term debt. And I can assure you, and there are people from the markets watching this tonight, that this plan does not result in the city having an investment-grade rating. If anything, I think it, it makes that scenario less likely. Number four, it talks about reduction of debt service obligations. And of course, this plan doesn't ensure that. If anything, it actually does nothing to address our general obligation debt coming in year four, the first year upon exit from the plan. It does nothing to deal with our long-term settlement obligations with, with AMBAC that stretch out another ten years. In fact, it, it does, it doesn't address debt service obligations at all, and it certainly doesn't ensure that they are, that they are reduced. Point five, you talk about how the plan shows a reduction in operating expenses. No, the plan doesn't show a reduction in operating expenses. In fact, in the paragraph below where you say that the plan ensures a reduction in operating expenses, you say on page twenty-three, quote, "It is also evident that there are no clear opportunities to close the Act forty-seven revenue and expenditure gap through immediate major expenditure reductions without reductions in vital and necessary services." Then you talk about how the plan basically ensures the generating of additional revenue through real estate tax increases. And I would note that the plan doesn't do that either because ultimately, only the governing body of the city can, can increase real estate taxes. And the governing body is completely against, against that. So of the six points that you describe in the plan, it, it doesn't ensure any of them. So then let's go back to the law. And let's go to Section two fifty-five point one, which, Section C, which is factors to consider which would allow the elimination of the distressed status. Okay? So if we believe that the plan is going to ensure it, then we should see these things happening, happening at, at the conclusion of the three years. Point one of the factors to consider that would lead to a determination that would rescind the distressed status is operational deficits in the municipality have been eliminated. Well, no. Actually, the, the plan calls for repeated and continued operational deficits. And to that, I would turn you to page sixty-two of the plan and the financial numbers that are put forth as a, quote, "general fund balance budget." And they show a deficit existing every year from twenty-eighteen to twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one. Now, they, you fill that deficit through the use of fund balance, but your, you certainly have a deficit in your structural operating, your structural operating budget. You also say that there should be, it should, it's, there should be a demonstrate, there should be a regional probability of future balanced budgets absent participation in this act. There is nothing which shows the regional, the reasonable assumption of a balanced budget for twenty-twenty-one. In fact, we have our, and you don't even address that in the, in the exit plan. You don't talk about making sure that in twenty-twenty-one, when the city is out of Act forty-seven, it would have a balanced budget. We still have our full general obligation pay, payment due. We would have to raise taxes even further. I think that's key for the public to understand. This is a hundred percent only in the three years of the plan. In the fourth year, we are on our own and they'd have to go up further. Even the taxes that are raised continue to be subsidized every year by fund balance. So even in twenty-twenty-one, you use seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of fund balance to subsidize those increases. And so we are not, we do not have the probability of a future balanced budget under the plan. Another, another criteria under the law is that obligations issued to finance municipalities' debt have been retired, reduced, or reissued. Nope, haven't done that. You absolutely have done nothing to retire, reduce, or reissue our debt. Now, I, I would say, we would like to try and achieve that over the course of the next three years, but this plan doesn't do it. If anything, it makes it, I think, more difficult for the city. And it says that there is a reasonably projected revenues in the municipality are sufficient to fund ongoing and necessary expenditures. That is also contradicted quite clearly in, in your plan. On that same page earlier on, when we talked about, talked about basically the, the changes that were going to be made, you, you bring out, I'll just, I'll just reference it. You, you talk about how there's much-needed expenditures for IT not addressed in the plan. There are, there are millions of dollars necessary for facility upgrades not addressed in the plan. Our engineer's here tonight, he will tell you that just to keep our roads in stable condition and from deteriorating further, that's about eight million dollars a year as much as, as much as we're talking about. We, we have no possibility. So we have no, no, no possibility for, for roads, no possibilities for, for, for basic services, and, and clearly, clearly those factors to consider are not going to exist in four years. I think another important point in the law is in Section two fifty-six B, one through four, and I want to put that on the record. And these are the things that you're supposed to do in an exit plan. Not only are you supposed to ensure the termination of distressed status after three years, which you don't do, you're supposed to do three things and you don't do any of them. It says, number one, the sale, the lease, the conveyance, or the assignment, or other use, or disposition of the assets of the distressed municipality. That's not in the exit plan? You know why that's not in the exit plan? Because we've already sold our assets, and that was in the original recovery plan. So it's not there. Number two, it talks about how exit plans should, should show the functional consolidation or privatization of existing municipal services. Well, you propose regionalization of police, which is not possible under the law, but other than that, you don't, you don't actually show a, a real means for that functional consolidation. You talk about, it talks about how exit plans are supposed to the execution, approval, modification, rejection, renegotiation, or termination of contracts or agreements of the distressed municipality. Wow, well, you don't, you don't discuss terminating or rejecting contracts. I don't believe that's legal either, but, but that's not in the, in the exit plan. And point four, in exit plans, there's supposed to be changes in the form of municipal government. Well, you do recommend home rule, but that is again something which you, which you can't ensure. So there's no, there's no guarantee that there are any changes. Note that the four examples of what an exit plan is supposed to contain under the law make no mention of taxes. Right? No mention of taxes. And yet, your plan is entirely taxes-based. You're basically suggesting that we should, we should take one form of taxing authority and substitute another taxing authority. That's not what exit plans are supposed to do under the law. And, you know, we can, we can make it pretty clear that we would be in much worse shape, much worse shape after, rather than before. In fact, if you look at, I'll, I'll refer to one more page in the law. If you look at point two oh one, and you take a look at, at basically the factors which would, not the factors that would rescind distressed status, but in this time, the factors that would cause somebody to go into Act forty-seven, Section two oh one, that criteria includes that the municipality's expenditures have exceeded revenues for a period of three years. So, and I just showed you in the plan that you do that for three years. So your plan actually puts us into distressed status. And we currently are not in distressed status. So it is not by any stretch of the means in exit plan, it doesn't comply with the law. So what should you be doing? Instead of trying to make the law work when it clearly doesn't work, you should be with us and the residents of this city pushing for the only solution which there is, which is to get the legislature to change the law. And instead of issuing an exit plan, you should petition the court with us to tell the court that DCD simply cannot comply with the law as written. We should get direction from the court, and we should put our focus on the legislature in September. This exercise in complying with the law is not working and doesn't work and, and is, is not appropriate. I do want to object to two sections of the plan, which I find particularly frustrating. And so if we're going to do some just comments, let's go to page sixty-two. And that, that has the, the budget that shows the years of deficits, the very thing that we're supposed to be not having. You have this bold section, and then you repeat those exact words with a footnote. So as if to try and make it more palatable, this hundred percent real estate tax increase, you say twice, on the same page, "The potential exists for tempering the use of fund balance and the recommended real estate tax increases through the city's active implementation of the numerous initiatives contained in this exit plan." No. We can't find a single initiative contained in the exit plan that is, is going to lead to a net positive financial, or something that can be insured to lead to a net positive financial gain for the city. And finally, if we could go to page four, because I think this is key to why we are where we are. When you talk about background and history in the plan, you basically say, "The Strong Plan was a great success. It eliminated the obligations associated with the resource recovery facility, the Harrisburg parking, yes, yes. It deposited proceeds in, in the city, yes, got all that." But then it says that the Strong Plan in twenty-thirteen increased net revenues so the general fund has enabled the city to operate with a balanced and sustainable budget, and that approximately ten million per year of new revenue coming from the parking transaction, the increased EIT, and a reduction in debt service expenses for grand total improvement for the city. The Strong Plan, and then you say, "The Strong Plan accomplished that goal." The Strong Plan absolutely did not, let me say this equitably, balance the city's budget or, or, or deal with the issue of the structural deficit. And I submit to you as, as evidence, clear evidence, I know Jerry and Patty are up here, and I won't put you on the spot, but do you remember the plug? You remember the plug? You remember the negative expenditure line item, which was the plug? Which is that basically, we arrived in City Hall in twenty-fourteen with a budget prepared by the Economy League that wasn't balanced. And basically contained a plug, which said that the only way it would be balanced is if we would underspend our budget by four million dollars. The reason that's important is because we have never addressed the structural deficit. And actually, the structural deficit was only addressed when the city petitioned the court to increase the LST. The money that came in from the LST eventually plugged that plug, that multimillion-dollar plug that was in the budget, and allowed us to balance our budget. The Strong Plan didn't do it. In fact, it was the fact that the city and previous administrations were trying to cover up for a structural imbalance that led us to a lot of the risky borrowings. Why do you think it was that the, the city wanted to keep doubling down on the incinerator? It was because they wanted to It was because they wanted to view it as a revenue generator, and they needed a revenue generator because they couldn't get the budget to balance. How did they plug it? Well, they took things, they did things like, they took money from the water and sewer fund. So instead of, and this was illegal, this is in the original Strong Plan, this led to court cases with the suburban municipalities and settlements. This is, this is a fact. The city plugged it by illegally taking money and not putting it back into the water and sewer infrastructure, which we're now having to pay with now. So part of the case for Harrisburg is that you, 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 you sort of left us high and dry on the structural deficit. We have done a good job of compensating for it, but that work is, has been left undone. So I think it is absolutely wrong to assert that that was accomplished. And in fact, it undercuts the argument for why the legislature needs to act now. All right, I'm almost done, and there's a lot of different tax, but that was, I'm just going to say a couple things. If, if I were putting together any type of a plan, the one thing I would assuredly not do is use fund balance to somehow mitigate property tax increases. I also wouldn't raise property taxes or draw down on our current taxing authority. If we were to have to lose our taxing authority in three years, then what we should be doing is raising as much money as we possibly can during the next three years to help mitigate those effects after the next three years, and raising as much money as we can to do certain things like pay down long-term debt obligations. So why would we take fund balance and use it to mitigate property tax increases, which is totally unnecessary, as opposed to, to pay off debt that we're going to owe, which would put us in a much more stable position? If we use, if we use our money to pay off debt, we will have a much smaller percentage real estate increase to have to deal with in four years. And if we raise as much money in the meantime, we can potentially make that last even longer and invest it wisely. One of the ways we could do that, by the way, right now, is by, in a three-year plan, enacting a commuter tax. And we should put this back on the table because it is absolutely allowed by law, and it would raise a tremendous amount of money, millions of dollars, to the city of Harrisburg over the next three years, which we could then use to pay off debt. So let's put that, if we're going to do an exit plan, into an exit plan. Now, our earned income tax combined rate in the city of Harrisburg is 2%. Just looking at the surrounding municipalities, there's only one municipality in Cumberland County that is at 2%, and that's Camp Hill. Other than that, every other municipality is well under 2%. So we could raise millions of dollars potentially from people who live in Cumberland County but work in the city of Harrisburg. And I, I will tell you, I know, I know that those numbers haven't been examined by this team, and I wonder, I wonder why that is, other than ideology, but if we're going to do it. Now, I think local services tax is a much simpler, $2 a week for people who can afford it. I don't think that's an undue burden, but if we're, if you're going to take away our local services tax, let's, let's, let's bring back a commuter tax and put that on the table. And, and it can be not just Cumberland County. Did you know Susquehanna's townships' total earned income tax only 1% or 2%? So that means the extra, the extra under commuter tax would go to Harrisburg. Same thing for Steelton, same thing for, for all over, for all of York and Perry County, and we're talking about millions and millions of dollars potentially in revenue. In addition to that, I will just note, I will make, I'll make one more comment, and then I'll stop. I would like to see the plan amended that if, if we were to receive monies from the settlement of, of current legal claims that are being undertaken by the Commonwealth, originally, the Strong Plan set that up in a complicated formula in which millions of those dollars would not go to the city of Harrisburg. It would instead go to Impact Harrisburg, a nonprofit organization. I'd like to see any results of any settlement claim coming to the city and going to use, again, to deal with the city's financial crisis. So please consider that a potential amendment. And now, I'm going to hand things over to the City Council President. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Good evening, everyone, and Mayor, well done. Speaking as the President of Harrisburg City Council, and after reading the Recovery Coordinator's Act 47 exit plan, it would be in the best interest as an elected official for the residents of this city not to approve it. The City of Harrisburg understands that the Department of Community and Economic Development and the Commonwealth worked diligently to keep the city through the Act 47 process to regain financial balance, and we are appreciative of your efforts. But what is being proposed is not realistic, and being barred from the consideration of the commuter tax has left the city with seeking other options for revenue, including requesting the continuation of tax increases, which are the LST and the EIT. The reality is Harrisburg does not have a tax base, nor the income from the 49,000 citizens who reside here. With a tax base of 39%, it would be detrimental for increases of 20% for 2019, 20% for 2020, and 43% for 2021 in real estate taxes. Recently, the Harrisburg School District voted to increase their tax base by 3%, along with Capitol Regional Water Authority, who are doing complete renovations of the sewer system, with additional increases up to 75% on the residents next year. With this exit plan proposal, we would see a surge of residents moving out of the city. And for those who considered this exit plan for us, I don't think any one of them lives in the city. Understanding the importance of the city to be financially independent, however, it was 28 years in the making that caused the financial distress, and with no oversight by the legislators, and today, where are they? All in this exit plan. Where were they at 28 years ago? Harrisburg should be afforded an opportunity for an extension, which I understand was not offered, to give us the necessary time to hire an expert on municipal funding to negotiate with all parties to address all of the critical issues listed in this plan. The Act 47 plan is recommending home rule, which seems to be mentioned several times throughout the report. Home rule would place the burden again on the same residents who are 39% of taxpayers or homeowners. As I'm sure most of you are aware, a large percentage of our properties are tax-exempt, which includes all the state-owned buildings located here in the city, which you work in. Out of the 67 counties and over 500 cities, the boroughs and townships in the state of Pennsylvania, how many third-class cities like Harrisburg are inundated with tax-exempt buildings and properties? Home rule is not the answer for Harrisburg's financial dilemma at this point, but could be considered once Harrisburg is financially solvent. Regionalization of our police force will be a challenge due to the different components involved. We have to consider pensions, salaries, benefits, and cultural relationships would play a large role in this initiative. As it presently stands, communications with other areas of Dauphin County Patrol Officers have a different perspective of city residents, and they certainly need training in diversity. Our Harrisburg Police Force handles hundreds of calls for assistance, and to the best of their ability, respond as quickly as possible. More importantly, giving the residents a comfort level that our police safety issues in our city would not be compromised is a priority. Regionalization would hinder service to our residents. And then let me speak about privatizing our sanitation department. I, as President of City Council, will not agree to privatize the sanitation department in the, during the three years that I'm here. The City of Harrisburg is the state capital, and we cannot push the state capital under a rug. It will have a ripply effect if this capital city does not stand out with a firm financial base. At this point, it is important that as elected officials, and I'm talking about your legislators, council members, commissioners, mayors, that we do not sacrifice our capital city because of egos. Stop playing political games. This is a serious matter. I'm willing to sit down with all officials, state, county, city, to try to develop an alternate plan that works towards an agreeable and reasonable financial solution that does not impact the residents of this city with taxation, taxation, taxation. Thank you.
I can go down the list if you'd like. I should say Councilwoman Green. Thank you.
Well, I suppose I was first alphabetically, so thank you to everyone for coming out tonight. Thank you to everyone who went before me. I'd like to echo their sentiments. Firstly, one of the biggest issues that I've been approached about is the increase of taxes by 100% over the next three years. As residents of the city of Harrisburg and as a lifelong resident of the city of Harrisburg, it's just not a viable option. I'll tell you a story. The other day, I was walking around Uptown, and I was stopped by a citizen, and she said, "I'd like for you to come into my house." And so I was a little shaky, but no, seriously, I went into her house because she asked me to. And when I went in there, her boxes were packed, and I said, "Well, where are you moving to?" She said, "I don't know, but I don't have enough money to live here anymore. I'm on a fixed income, and I have a mortgage. They're saying my taxes are going to increase, my school taxes are going to increase, the cost of living is going up, but my money isn't. I can't afford to live in Harrisburg anymore. I don't know where I'm going, but I have to go somewhere." And this is something that we'll continue to see as taxes increase. People don't have an unlimited supply of money that we might think they have, but as taxes increase, they have to think about themselves, and they look for somewhere cheaper to live. Sometimes that might mean living with family members. As of right now, rent is already astronomically high in the city of Harrisburg. I know two and three families living in three-bedroom houses because they have to split the rent, because landlords aren't paying all of your utilities. So when you're talking about that your sewage bill is going up, that you've got food costs going up, that rent is going up, electricity is going up, gas is going up, and Lord, don't tell me you have oil heat because that price is going up. But these are all bills that the citizens of Harrisburg have to worry about paying. Meanwhile, some of them are living in houses that we would consider condemned if you walked into them. We have people that recently just moved out of their 14th Street homes because they, they were considered condemned, but they lived there continuously because they couldn't afford anywhere else to go. We're talking that their staircase was separating from the wall, but they just couldn't afford anywhere else to go. Because when you own a home and the property value is so low that if you sell it, you might only get $50,000, but you can't move anywhere else for $50,000 without a mortgage, where do you expect these people to go? How do you expect the citizens of Harrisburg to continue to live when we continue to tax them over and over and over again? And this plan seems to look at this taxing authority in a silo. It seems not to address the fact that everything else is going up, but wages aren't. And that's something that we need to think about as elected officials, as people of this board. This is something that needs to be addressed. We can't just brush over it. See, this seems to be a three-year exit plan on a 30-year problem, but no one seems to be approaching it as a 30-year problem. You're looking at it as a three-year exit plan to say we exited you out of Act 47, but if you exit us out of Act 47 to leave us worse than we were before, it's just beginning a cycle of us being in Act 47. So what are we really doing? This plan has to address all the issues that got us here in the first place, and it has to be a viable option to make for sure we don't end up here in the future. Right now, looking at this plan, it's, it's a plan, it, it looks to see the city deteriorate while people move out, while blight goes up, while crime goes up, because when you regionalize a police force, you're going to take services away from the city. And when the prices to live go up, crime is going to increase as well, but we're not looking at things as a comprehensive plan. We're looking at them in little bits and pieces to say, "We've made it out of Act 47." It's a plan to get you out of Act 47, but it doesn't seem like a plan. It seems like words on paper to say that we wrote something down. And I appreciate you guys putting time into this plan, but I think that we really need to look at it again to address everything as a whole. And hopefully, tonight, you take these comments into consideration, and that we can all work together to revise this plan so it's a true viable option for the residents of Harrisburg and for the city to truly come out of the distressed status. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Councilman Mattson?
Yes. A lot of my comments echo Councilman Green's sentiments, but I'm here today to speak on behalf of populations that often are left without a voice, the elderly, the disabled, and low-income families, including working or single parents. I'm voicing my objections to the Act 47 exit plan in its current form. Most of my concerns are highlighted in the Harrisburg Housing Authority Data Collection Tool. The data collection tool gives a substantive breakdown of the current housing needs in the city of Harrisburg. The report highlights a few telling statistics that should be noted for the record. The data, the data collection tool states, "Affordable housing needs in Harrisburg are significant. High housing costs reduce economic opportunities, access to jobs and services, and the ability of lower-income households, including the elderly and persons with disabilities, to live in communities and neighborhoods of their choice. The city of Harrisburg has, has a need to expand the supply of quality, affordable housing for renters, homeownership, neighborhood stabilization, and improve the quality of existing housing stock." 39% of households, 27, 27% of that are renters, 12% of owners are severely cost-burdened. It is my belief that the current exit plan and the proposed real estate taxes will disproportionately affect our most vulnerable citizens, including senior homeowners, disabled homeowners, which includes veterans, and low-income families. I'm humbly asking you that you, as Recovery Coordinator, revisit the exit plan so that it does not put further taxing burdens on these populations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Ms. Daniels?
Yes, I'll just be brief. My name is Shmaine Daniels, and I came, I joined council in January of 2014, which means that the increase in EIT had already gone up before I came on. And after that, council was tasked with increasing the LST, and we also had a few other income-generating things, increases in fines for our, for landlords and such, as well as, we, we also voted on things like tax abatements. Every year, I looked at those budgets and looked at, tried to figure out whether they were consistent with our exit plan, with the court order for how we were supposed to come out. And every year, we received assurances that our budget did meet those requirements. So that we, as a body, are a little bit caught off guard with these increases in, these recommendations to get us out of the plan is not, isn't unexpected. You know, every year, we received your, your assurances, and the, the recommendations that you offer would really diminish our ability as a city to grow. Cities that thrive are cities where place, are places where people want to be, where there's safety, where roads are taken care of, where there are parks. I mean, our parks' budgets are significantly diminished. So I would just basically ask you to reconsider your plan with an eye towards helping us, helping the city become a city that thrives, rather than a city that will have to shut its doors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. Did I see Mr. Majors?
Hello, sir.
Oh, sir, I thought I saw you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Please speak.
My name is Councilman Westburn Majors. All of my colleagues already said enough, and I don't want to belabor the point, I want to give the residents that are here an opportunity to speak on behalf of the plan, so I echo all our comments, and we don't believe that this plan is right for us, and I look forward to hearing from all the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. That being said, we will start to my far right, in the furthest corner here. If we could take three minutes... If we could take three minutes. I do.
School Board President.
Can you please state your name and...
Judd Pittman, Harrisburg City School Board President. And first off, I'd like to thank all the residents for coming out today. I'd really like to thank and give kudos to Mayor Papafus' comments, President Williams' comments, and the rest of City Council. But it really seems today that this particular plan was generated in a vacuum. And in the spirit of government that works, I would ask that you think about all the other complexities that go into this particular request. And one of those complexities is the burden that has been put on this community as a result of the school district being in recovery. And with a projection that looks out into the future where we're unable to put together a balanced budget year after year, and we're put to the T and asked by the legislature and by the Secretary of Education to increase real estate tax to the Act 1 index for the foreseeable future, but specifically for the next four years, and to possibly ask for exemption to increase that more. When you add that with the particular burden that you're asking in this particular plan, you're asking our residents to continue to foot the bill in this space. So, I would ask you that when you think about the opportunity for the LST or the Continued Taxing Authority, that you take that into consideration, because all of us are going to be going to that same pool and asking for those supports regardless of, regardless of the opportunities. We don't have increasing taxing authority as a school district. We're going to have to lean on our residents if we're going to find more revenue. So, please take that into consideration and think about the opportunity to continue to support the councils and the mayor's request for the increased taxing authority through the LST. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comment. Before I move on, we've decided that, excuse me, we've decided we're going to go by order of which the person signed in, just in fairness to them. And then, also, have I missed any other elected officials that are present? Are you an elected official, sir?
I am. I am a local association. Men?
I'm sorry, you're out of order, sir. We're going to take it in order of...
I'm the president of the Great Harrisburg Association, but I kind of appreciate that.
Yeah, we've clarified as governmental elected official, sir. No disrespect intended. Okay, I have David Miller. I think Mueller. David Mueller. T-R-U-O-N-G.
I was a player.
Oh, you sure? Okay.
Everybody was told to sign in.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you, sir, for clarifying. Emily Frohla?
Yes, hi. I'm Emily Frohla. Hi, my name is Emily Frohla. I live at 1019 Melrose Street.
Can you please spell your last name?
F-R-O-L-A. And I am terrified. I, I love this city. When I moved into my house 10 years ago, I could have bought a house anywhere, but I chose to buy a house here because I love living here and I, I can't see myself going elsewhere. But in the face of this potential 100% tax increase, I will no longer be able to afford to stay in my home. And that thought scares me terribly. Therefore, I actually did something that I never thought I would do the other day. I contacted a real estate agent to see what I would have to do to start the process of selling my home. And basically, what I was told was that if I were to sell my home, it would be at a loss because pretty much no buyer would want to buy my house, being that there's this situation with these taxes going up. So, I'm terrified, and I just hope that, you know, we can find some resolution in this that makes the city solvent again, but that doesn't put all the burden on property owners. Thank you.
You see, I struggled to get through there. First of all, I'm appalled that you had this meeting here in this building with all of these people where you could have taken it to a school, Cam Curtin, John Harris, but I know you work down here, so you want to hurry up and get back out State Street. I want to talk about the taxes. You're going to see a lot of sales signs go up. People are going to get out of here, but you don't live here, so it doesn't matter.
Kelvin Edmonds?
Your Honor, I am Dr. Calvin Edmonds.
Pardon me, sir. Dr. Calvin Edmonds, sorry.
I want to speak proudly on behalf of the senior citizens. I have lived in Harrisburg for 42 years. I own a home here, and I've never missed paying my property taxes. If your property tax doubles, and I already got my school tax bill, and that's going up, I don't know what the county's going to be, but I'm going to be paying almost $1,000 a year more in taxes. There are citizens here, senior citizens, who are on fixed social security, and maybe the only pension they have. Some may have a social security plus a pension from a company. But rarely does anybody, anybody here can say their pension's been doubled in the last two years. We don't get our pensions doubled. What this will result in is citizens who paid, had 25- and 30-year mortgages, paid them off, paid their property taxes, going into deficit and default because they can't pay these property taxes. And what happens? Penalties and interest will be added to it. Don't pay it the second year, and you will start confiscation procedures. You will kick us out of our homes and sell our homes for the property taxes they couldn't pay. And who are you going to sell them to? You're going to sell them to the people who are, I want to say it in a nice way. I don't need to, you know what I mean? Who will take advantage. I consider this bordering on a criminal conspiracy to defraud senior citizens and by taking their property, because you know, no senior citizen, unless they work for Donald Trump, can get their money doubled to pay their taxes.
Stephen Feizer?
Here, I'll just say it.
I'll ask.
Wanda Heiss?
I'm not.
Okay. Camille? I can't read the last name.
Is that Reese?
Yes. Day Thomas Lesher? Leader, sorry.
Douglas Thompson Leader, yeah. He just writes it like, yeah.
Yes, Douglas Thompson Leader. Sorry about that, sir. I do want to reiterate that this was clearly not the proper venue, given the volume of people that come out and how bloody hot it is in here. But I do want to thank Mayor Papafus and President of the Council for your words and your analysis of the document. I didn't get a chance to read through it at that level, but it doesn't sound like a plan to me. If half the stuff in it's illegal, the other half of the stuff is a wish, I don't even know what you would call that. So, level waiting to raise taxes just to have us go back into receivership in three years, I think you need to go back to the drawing board and maybe come up with a few more ideas, listen to the people in this room. It says R. Mohammed? Mohammed?
All righty. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rafika Mohammed. I am, yes, I did, I'm sorry. My name is Rafika Mohammed. I am a resident and born and raised, I'm a native of this community and of this city. And I'm going to speak on behalf of the renters. A lot of people in this community are renters, and if the taxes go up with our rent already at the rates that they are now, echoing what everybody's saying that our income does not increase, our pensions don't increase, our, whatever we're getting on a fixed level is not increased, what is going to happen to us? You're going to have a ghost city. And I've never thought that I would stand anywhere and say that I would have to leave my home. This is my home. So, it seems like that we're getting kicked out of our residence, whether we like it or not. So, on behalf of the renters, no one is really thinking about what we have to do. We have families. And what the one lady had said, that there are families, literally, living in houses, small houses. How do you have three or four families living in a house just to maintain? Our homeless problem right now is out of control in the city. No one has talked about that here. We're going to have more homeless people on the streets, but we're also going to have a ghost town if we move forward with this plan. That's all I have to say.
Now, you have to bear with me a second. Again, it's an R, and it looks like a J-O-H-U-S-E.
Ronald Johnson. Let me get over my sex.
I'm sorry, sir, it's just difficult to read.
Ronald Johnson, and I've been a community leader in the City of Harrisburg, and I normally would say on Allison Hill, but I'm all over the city. And I need to speak on behalf of the renters, the disabled, the seniors, and everybody who is paying anywhere from $8.50 to $1,000 a month. I'm planning on having a community meeting in 1,800 Blockers Arch Street on Thursday to explain the demographics to the community that does not understand what is actually taking place. And I think it's unfair that this bill be put out there, and I know people might not like me because I always run my mouth, and I am going to continue to do so when injustices like this are occurring.
Balduck?
I'm not going to speak last time, I was just on the...
Oh, okay, I see. Okay, sorry, Tiffany. Bill Clock? He gave me written comment, or you can also do oral comment, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Got to pick out the highlight. City resident, small business owner, and I think I'm about to become a four-time flood victim living in Shypoke. So, I don't want to be here any longer. I've got some things to move. Two points. I read the plan. I think a lot of it is rational and feasible. I don't have any comment on the police and fire. They've got their own issues, and they're probably right. I'm disappointed we're raising legal issues. I think that could be done in written comments. I assume you have your own lawyers, and you can decide if your plan is legal or not. When I was on the Board of Capitol Region Water, we released a forensic investigation in January 2012. I testified before the State Senate in 2013. I testified before the grand jury in 2014. The civil lawsuit was just filed. That's outrageous. The corruption in the Attorney General's office has to be called out. There's no reason, this case shouldn't have been brought civilly years ago, and by now, we would already have settlements, and the proceeds from those settlements could be going back to Capitol Region Water for the 1.5 million that they spent to impact Harrisburg and the balance to the city to take care of the $11 million deficit. The most important thing you can do is establish checks and balances. The original strong plan had an Act 47 Municipal Advisory Committee. The mayor sat on it, council president, county commissioner, and the receiver, and there may have been others. These were public meetings that enabled the public to participate in the process. A matrix was developed so we could follow the initiatives and see the status of what's happened. That hasn't happened. That needs to reoccur because you clearly have a public that's invested and interested in what goes on, and I suspect, as long as those meetings aren't at 8 o'clock on Wednesday morning, you will have public participation. And we will find out why certain initiatives haven't been established. For example, why don't we have the trust established for the OPEP, for the post-employment benefits? According to the exit plan, there's $1 million we could have had saved by now, $1 million on the table because of the failure of the administration to act. And this isn't the only one. If you get into the weeds of the plan, you'll see there's $1 million that Lakswama is holding on to as escrow because of the fear that the city can't pay the trash bills. Guess what? We've made our minimum $33,000, $35,000 for two years. Let's negotiate with Lakswama and get that $1 million back into the city budget and use it for capital improvements at the public works facilities. I could go on, but I think my three minutes are up. Thank you.
Patricia Goodall?
Uh, yes.
Kathleen Dougherty?
Yes.
Jeff Polacek?
I think that's the list with just the sign-ins.
Okay. Danielle Bowers?
No, thank you.
Vernal Edmonds?
That's the general list.
We're going through the list, so it just took me a minute to get through it. Daniel Bowers? David Wenner? Chris Feizer? Glenn Heiss?
Yes.
Kevin Novigan?
Yes.
Chris McGee?
Is that McGraw?
McGraw, sorry. Sorry about that, sir.
Are those cameras on? Is this filmed?
They just pieced out. That might be on the...
Oh, it matters to me. I want to be on TV. I have a solution. Sell the Capitol Building. They said it's priceless. That will take out all debt, right? If you could, sell it, sell it. I just have some suggestions. I don't know, you said you guys are going to the, to the government, I mean, to the state legislators or whatever with you. What are you doing? I'm over in the corner. I couldn't see your expressions in your face.
I know, sir, I'm sorry. I'm the recovery coordinator for the City of Harrisburg.
Okay, so are you against us or for us? I just, I don't know, because, I mean, the way the mayor was speaking, I think you might need a confidence builder and esteem builder afterwards, because he was like breaking down everything, but I don't know if you're for us or against us. But, you know, I just want to say, you know, this is the bit, the most I've ever seen people come out and be involved in the community, right? And there's other issues that go on in the community that it's like, no one even cares, but once you want to increase taxes, I'm against it, don't get me wrong. But, like, people aren't reporting people dumping trash, selling drugs, you know, it's like soon as you want to touch someone's finances or increase property tax, now everyone wants to come out, right? But let's police our communities on an ongoing basis, and then we won't have all these issues. You know, we can have volunteer firemen, people volunteering to help cut man hours and money, just like with Aaron Johnson had called me and there was a thousand volunteers from the three-three-three building on Thirteenth Street. These people didn't even live in the city, but cleaned up about a million pounds of trash. And they came from other states. And I just want to say, you know, if they can get the key to the city, that'd be greatly appreciated, just a key. If you don't have a key, I got an extra one. I just think that if we had more volunteer stuff, like incentive volunteer programs, you know, we have enough people that commit crimes that there should be some mandated volunteer work, you know, and put back into the community. I'm just offering some solutions. My first one's to sell the Capitol Building. That'd cover everything. But also, we're talking about the streets. I don't know if you've seen the commercials, but Domino's Pizza said, "Call them and they will come out and repair streets," so partner up with Domino's. Did you see the commercial? Maybe you didn't, I did. But these are solutions, you know, I'm not too much of a politician, I really don't understand, I think, you know, it's a justified way to rip people off. Anyway.
Thank you, sir.
Write that stuff down, call Domino's, get them to fix the streets, possibly sell the Capitol Building, just like you sold the water and other stuff, and mandate volunteer work, that'd help, that'd help cut some...
Fran Harris.
Hi, I'm Fran Harris, I'm a homeowner. I wanted to ask the panel, do any of you live in this city? Raise your hand. That's why this plan is an unmitigated disaster. It's, you haven't done your homework, you haven't done your research, you just threw a bunch of crap on paper without thinking things through, without thinking about the real-life impact it's going to have on every one of the citizens in this city. In my opinion, you haven't fulfilled your responsibility. You're going to put this city back in disaster mode. If I, I'm heading towards retirement if I can, but with the tax increases that you are asking for, I may not be able to buy, you know, to pay for them. I'll be on a fixed income. And then what do I do? No one will buy my house, I'll be one of those people out on the street or living with my relatives somewhere. You haven't thought this through. You haven't done your due diligence, and you're going to make this city once again in distress mode, so think again and go back to the drawing board.
Tyrone Tennant. Andy Isaac.
Hi, Anne.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Andy Isaacs at fifteen thirteen Green Street. I have a feeling that much of the preparation of this plan was a matter of fairly complicated arithmetic. You say, "Okay, we need so much money, a mill of taxes brings in so much money, so we'll need to increase taxes by so many mills over the next three years." Rather, I'd like to talk about the side effects. You've certainly heard from people saying that they think they will not be able to afford to live in the city anymore. That is true of a few of them, but I think for many more, it'll be a matter that they say, "Well, is it worth it for me to live in the city at this point?" I think you're going to find a great, a surprising number of people feel it's a better bet to sell their houses at a loss and move out. Landlords are going to see a similar increase in their taxes, they're going to have to make it up by charging more in rent. They might not be able to get it. They might feel it's a better bet just to abandon the buildings. The effect of all of this is to lower the tax base of the city. And what do you do in that case? You still need the money. You're going to have to raise taxes even more, a higher rate because you have a lower base. This is not a recipe for getting out of distress. I think, I think we'll be coming to a very similar hearing like this in eight years or ten years. Wondering, well, how do we, how do we get out of distress again? Thanks.
Michael Walker Travers. Cheryl Thompson.
I come to you as a really a sad person. I invested my life here in Harrisburg, I'm not an original resident, I'm a transient. I came from East Orange, New Jersey by way of college and taught in the school system for thirty-five years, my husband and I. We educated two children in this school system, lived on Nineteenth Street. My saddest thing here is that you haven't looked at us. You came in, you came one day, spent two hours, and left, and didn't spend any time to really get to know us. And you need to do that. It would have been nice for you to take up residence here for a week and see what it's like to live here. I don't think you would have come up with the same solution if you had actually lived here. My second thing is the ninety-eight-page report. I thank you, Mayor Papenfuss, for breaking it down and everyone else who spoke. Ninety-eight pages? Excuse me. You should have, you could have, put it in bullet so that we all could have had something in writing when we came here. Don't ask me to print it out, you print it out for me and prepare for me to read what you want me to do. Or contribute to something. Yes, I could have gone up and read it all, but what I need you to do now is when you go back to the drawing board, to come up with a condensed version of what we need to read. Please don't leave us out in the cold like you're doing now. A ninety-eight-page report? Excuse me. You should have done better, and you should have been better prepared, because you see all these people here? We pay for you to do better for us. Please do so.
Daniel Stern. It's difficult to read. Is it Daniel Stern? Sorry, sir. It's just difficult to read.
Good evening, I'll be very brief, I'm Daniel Stern, I've lived here for thirty-three years. I just wanted to give a little historical perspective to what's happened in the last five years. When Harrisburg entered Act forty-seven, the conditions in this city, as you know, were bleak and the outlook was even bleaker. And against all odds, the city in the last five years started to make a comeback. The strong plan, which was greeted with skepticism, as the mayor has said, has worked. It's still working. I don't, it has been referenced as to where people live, but if you spend any time in Harrisburg, you would know that new people are moving in, not just to Midtown, but to all around the city in the last five years. The Broad Street market has reversed a really long decline and is hugely popular with residents and non-residents, it's an income generator. There's new restaurants, there's millworks, there's, you know, there's little lamps. I don't know if you've been to these places, but these are all signs of prosperity. We've got a great free newspaper called The Berg, which describes things that are happening in Harrisburg, they're all good things. And in my neighborhood, Bellevue Park, young families are moving in with children, which is what my wife and I did thirty-three years ago. This is, these are all signs of Renaissance. And in my view, it would be such a shame to turn that around and wreck it. And this is not like a natural disaster, this is a man-made disaster, and it's a preventable one. I don't think you'll find a Realtor, I don't think you'll find a member of the Pennsylvania Legislature of any party, I don't think you'll find an economist who suggests that a city can prosper when you double the real estate taxes on the residents. That's simply not going to happen. And it's remarkable to me, frankly, that that proposition could be put forth, and it's only explainable by the fact that we're in a box. The box created by certain rules, and I think frankly you folks are in that box and you're trying to comply with those rules. And it's not for me to say that the rules should be broken, they shouldn't be broken, but the rules need to be changed legally. Our fate really is in the hands of the Pennsylvania Legislature. And I think your role, constructive role, would be to amend your report and to make a candid recommendation that to keep what's good going and not go backwards, the city needs to retain the taxing authority it has. The only reason, as I understand it, that it's going to lose it, is because of this amendment to the law that was made in twenty thirteen or twenty fourteen. Well, what was amended can be unamended. And that is probably the solution. I don't know how much authority you really have to affect that, but I think you can probably recommend it. And I think if you do any economic analysis, although I don't really think any's needed because it's kind of obvious, if you want less of something, tax it more. You want less people to live here, tax them more, they'll move. You've heard it, they're going to leave. That's not the purpose of the plan, the strong plan, that's not the purpose of the statute you operate under, that's certainly not the purpose of the jobs of any of the elected officials. So you have a situation where that's the remedy. I think you could be instrumental in doing that. This shouldn't be a hostile relationship. We need you. We need you to persuade the legislature that there's got to be a different way to do what needs to be done.
Angela McKirkin. Thank you, sir. Angela McKirkin. Kathleen O'Donnell. Carrie Fowler.
Hi, my name's Carrie Fowler, I am also a school board member for the Harrisburg City Schools, and what I would like to invite you to do is consider the children. I'm here to represent the kids. Just think what this is going to do, the additional burden it's going to do to the parents that are trying to raise their kids and send them to our school district.
Linda Goldstein. Mike Clapsaddle. You hear Mike? Nevend Midlin. I'm probably not pronouncing that correctly.
I'm Nevend Midlin, I live at twenty-five fifty North Third Street. I think the mayor did a very good analysis, I would say, however, that I don't think the law's ever been followed. And I think, in fact, the strong plan has always been the wrong plan, and I'd like to go back to some of the fundamental principles of the Act itself. Legislative intent, and it says very clearly that the intent is to ensure fiscal integrity of municipalities based on available revenues. Enact procedures for the adjustment of municipal debt by negotiated agreement with creditors. And I want to stress this last one because it's very critical. Provide for the exercise of the Commonwealth's sovereign and plenary police power to ensure or to protect public health, safety, and the welfare of the municipalities' citizens. That's a critical element that's not being hit here, and the police chief talked about that. The sustained failure to enact or implement a plan to address adequately or prevent insolvency constitutes a fiscal emergency, and it signifies a breakdown of the function of municipal government, and I want to stress, a dereliction of the duty, of the elected official's paramount duty, paramount duty to safeguard the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. They have a list in the Act of vital and necessary services. These are fundamental and they take precedence over debt repayment. Sovereign responsibilities cannot be set aside for financial interests. Now I list in here a set of principles to deal with this, and the first one is, lest the city is solvent and not facing an emergency, the city should only be, services should only include vital and necessary services. The original plan doesn't do that, and from what I understand, yours doesn't either. The test is whether the budget can be balanced and operations sustained to effectuate the paramount duty of public and elected officials to safeguard the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens within current permitted taxing power without raising taxes that is essentially available revenues. In fashioning a plan, you also have to take into account that in vital and necessary services, there are some services that have a higher order than others, and that is the exercise of the Commonwealth's sovereign and plenary police powers. That is the essentials of government that is almost pre-constitutional, and that certainly trumps anything you're trying to do to subvert those powers and those responsibilities. Now I have a list in here of examples of what might be privatized, and there are examples of things that can be done, because privatization is more important, if that's what it takes, in order to be able to assure public health and safety and welfare. A sound, effective plan is one that is limited to permitted and sustainable available resources, that addresses the needs of government's sovereign and plenary powers in the first instance, and vital and necessary services to assure the public's health, safety, and welfare at a minimum in the second instance, and finally, that address the adjustment of municipal debt by negotiated agreement with what is left of available resources. So I want to get to the bottom line here.
Sir, you're beyond your three minutes, so if you could wrap it up, would appreciate it.
What's that?
You're beyond your three minutes, but you may wrap it up if you'd like.
Adopting a plan based on the intent of the law and within sound public policy can be done. It requires adherence to the fundamental purposes of government, meeting the intent of the governing act, placing sound policies and principles and practices above political power. It also means that at the baseline, the sovereign and plenary... power. It also means that at the baseline, the sovereign and plenary powers of the Commonwealth, for which the city is responsible, must take precedence over satisfying the creditors within a limited available resources, which means if you have to, you have to go to the court, open the financial aspects of this plan, and explain why sovereign government requirements cannot be met and have to be met. Thank you very much.
Mary Warner. Dan Dibler. Stephen Rzonca. R-Z-O-N-C-A. I'm sorry if I mispronounce it. Sorry. Please pronounce it for me correctly. Thank you, sir.
Hi. My name's Stephen Junzsa. I've been a resident in Harrisburg since 2005, a homeowner since 2007. I'm greatly concerned with the impact that exit plan proposals have on Harrisburg's future. Absent legislative change or change in home rule amendments, the plan proposes enormous real estate taxes while reducing local service and earned income taxes, mitigating the revenue gap by plundering the general fund, which is essential for paying for vital deferred capital expenditures. The real estate tax hikes would prove to be a regressive form of tax, disproportionately affecting lower and fixed-income homeowners, many of whom are already struggling financially and would immediately be at risk of losing their homes. Looking at Harrisburg's current real estate taxes and low median income, it is evident the city already suffers a severe disadvantage versus surrounding areas relating to maintaining and growing its tax base, exacerbated by the fact only half of the city's real estate is taxable. Coupled with egregious school district property tax hikes, doubling the real estate tax will trigger a migration of residents in the higher income bracket, tax brackets, best positioned to decamp and flee. It also adds an extra disincentive for incoming residents to the area and businesses to the region to choose the city, and thus, a tax revenue death spiral will ensue. Harrisburg risks returning to the dark days of severely depressed property prices, unaccountable absentee slum lords, a proliferation of abandoned structures, and blight, along with the associated rise in crime that comes with vacant properties. The plan's proposals are punitive for the residents of Harrisburg who have strived to turn the city's fortunes around, none of whom were complicit in the short-sighted and fraudulent decisions state and local politicians of the '70s and '80s made, which led to Harrisburg's current plight. To conclude, it's imperative that the exit plan be revised to remove the real estate tax hikes and allow the city to maintain the extra LST and EIT taxing authority for the full three-year extension. This will both maintain the general fund, allowing the city to continue to operate to full strength, and save off an exodus of fellow residents, maintaining the tax base until such a time new legislation is enacted or home rule can be adopted. Thank you.
Wendy Alfred. Tanya Dieroff.
So I submitted a written comment, but if Bill Clapp can do both, so can I. So I'll be very brief, and thank you to the city for collecting those 130 comments and submitting them to you, and thank you all for your time. I kindly ask that you review each of those 130 comments as an individual comment. There may be a theme, but those are individuals that submitted those comments. You may have had 260 or 390 comments as well, had you given an easily accessible email address within the recovery plan, or had you had a 30-day comment period. I'd just like to remind us of some statistics here in the city of Harrisburg. Per the Census Bureau, we do have a population of 49,000 residents. That population, after years of decline, is only now beginning to stabilize, and there is hope that that population will continue to grow. Our owner occupied rate here in the city is at 36%, and we have a median household income of less than $34,000. The plan task was for it to be sustainable. The plan as it is written is unsustainable. We cannot absorb the increase in the suggested real estate tax increase. We must do everything we can to maintain the LST, and under the three-year exit plan, we cannot forego potential revenue on the table. I kindly request that if the plan ultimately has a recommendation to phase that, which I am not in support of, that we do nothing in the meantime to leave potential revenue on the table. And I also wanted to remind us all that when Harrisburg thrives, the region thrives. This is not a Harrisburg issue. This is a Capital Region issue.
Russa Bluse. Not sure I'm pronouncing it correctly. Are you S-S-A? My name is... Oh, I'm sorry. Please excuse me.
My name is Russell Bluest. I take it you guys are all from the state, right? What I don't understand is every single time a politician gets up to campaign, they talk about eliminating property taxes. That's what they're going to do. They run on eliminating property taxes. So if we can't eliminate property taxes, then why blow that smoke up our -- it just doesn't even make sense to me. Why the city of Harrisburg is not entitled to a right to add a 2% or 3% sales tax to alcohol, cigarettes, and everything else to help support what's been going on makes absolutely no sense to me. Philadelphia does it. Pittsburgh does it. Allentown does it. Without it, it's just not going to happen. I'd love to know how you guys plan on getting rid of property taxes altogether if you can't even do it in the city of Harrisburg. My last comment is, the most disappointing thing about this is that this doesn't come up until it's too late. It doesn't make any sense to look at it when you've got days to decide what you're doing, and nobody cared what anybody else thought throughout the process. And I got to tell you, honestly, when I look at all you people up there, you look like you don't care even a little bit. And that's, I hate to say it that way, but you really do not look like any of you really care. You just want to get out of here.
Levon Abbey. Mary Jean Gabeau. Rick, yeah, sorry.
Thank you. I live at Pennsylvania Place. I live at 301 Chestnut Street, and I walk to work every day because I'm getting ready to retire in a few years, and I hate to drive in the snow. So it's easier for me to walk to work than it is for me to kill myself getting here in the snow. So I only have to walk 15 minutes, to make a long story short. But I was not here during Mayor Reed, nor was I here for Linda Thompson. I'm a brand-new resident. I've been here less than three years. I do go to city council meetings, and I'm involved other ways. And I'm just going to bring up an idea, which I'm sure nobody's ever thought of, but I like to think outside the box, and I know we're in the need of money financially. And it dawned on me, why can't we be the first city to start a lottery just for the city of Harrisburg? We can have, it can't be any worse than collecting it anyway, but we could either do it once a week or once a month we can have it. We could have the funds go. Of course, we'd have to help the stores that sell the tickets for us, and they'll get part. The people who work, of course, will have to get a part, but at least we'll have some flowing income coming in besides taxing 100% of my rent, which I think is outrageous. And this way, people like to gamble anyway. They go all over to gamble. This way, we can keep our money in town, keep it local, and it'll be distributed among the local residents, and it won't be charged against the elderly, the low income. At least the lottery, the people that want to play can play. And guess what? You're not hurting anybody. I'm sorry, but that's my solution. Take it for what it's worth. Thank you.
Ron Taylor. Ron Taylor. Rachel Lewis. Tim, oh, boy. R-O-W-B-O-T-T-O-M. Okay. Thank you, sir.
I wanted to give a little bit of a, my name's Tim Robottom. I'm a commercial property owner and resident here in Harrisburg. My kids attend the city schools, and it's really a nightmare here already. There's a lot of stuff that needs fixed, and I would just like to put a little bit different twist on things. When you're looking for why you don't have the revenue and why you don't have the things that you guys are looking for, for the city to take on their own responsibilities, I would like to turn a little bit this way towards this gentleman and his administration and their lack of care for people on the other side of the aisle that are trying to open businesses and to bring franchises. I mean, this gentleman right here is in charge of the administration destroying 100 jobs immediately from coming to Allison Hill. And I think it's over the EPA Brownfield sites and lots and lots of funneling of money. When you're talking about 400 million, you know, and you're talking another 350 to Capital Region water, it sounds like they're not really worried about the residents here, that they're more worried about stealing all this money and all this property so that when it does recover, the people with the big pockets are the one left holding all the property. And I would like to speak for the small business owners and for the little mom and pops. They can't survive under any new taxes. And if you want to look for money, look at getting an administration that would remove the red tape from property owners, from business owners, to where they could come in here and actually invest some money and get a return regardless of the political party, because it's very evident right now, if you're a Democrat fanbase and you're friends with the mayor, you can give $68,000 and get a $5 million grant. Imagine if that $5 million grant was given out to 500 residents, $10,000. Imagine how much, how much change you would see in the city of Harrisburg compared to funneling the money back and forth between a party and stealing the money from, really, the American people. And I would just like to say, the best thing you could do is get rid of this administration. That's it.
Brianna Crowley. Brianna Crowley. Andrew Pinkwell. Binder. Ronald Wetzel. Donald Barnett.
I'll pass. My comments were spread on the city website.
Thank you, sir. Loretta Barbie Dare. Dare, sorry. It's an R. E. Sorry about that.
You know, I really hadn't planned on speaking. I thought I was signing in just to appear. But Marita, I actually know who you are. I don't know any of you, and I don't know if you had the opportunity to introduce yourselves. Are your microphones on? Would you like to know these people's names and who they are? Because I know I would. You know, my name is Loretta Barbie Dare. Sorry, Loretta. And for all the years that you were on the Dolphin County Democratic Committee, you don't remember my name? I'm at 34 North Summit Street, and I've been in Harrisburg for over 30 years. And I've been in the Summit Street neighborhood for over 30 years and a member of the Summit Terrace Neighborhood Association. I'm not here to berate you guys, because everyone who stood up here before me said everything that I have been thinking about since I found this heinous paper in my email about what you guys are getting ready to do. Now, thank you, Mayor, for pointing out those points, and everyone else has gone, but I have another question. And I really do would like to, I would like to know your name. So I'm not going to sit down, yeah, yeah. But there's one other thing I'd like to ask. Are you familiar with the frog in the pot story? Yeah, when you, you can take a frog, you put him in a pot of water that's cold, he'll jump out. But if you put him in a pot of tepid water and just leave him to sit there and just start turning the heat up, that frog will sit there until he's basically killed, cooked to death, because he doesn't have enough sense to move. You've heard some of our residents say they're getting ready to move. There are people in my neighborhood who have their boxes all packed, just waiting for an opportunity to get out. We can't afford to lose any more people here in Harrisburg. We don't have a tax base. We don't have 89,000 people that the city of Harrisburg used to have back in the '40s. We've got 49,000 people, and it seems to me that you folks are trying to run them out. That breaks my heart. Now, what's your name, young man?
I'm Michael Gerber. I work at the Department of Community and Economic Development, and I live in Lower Patsy.
Hi, Michael.
I'm Patty Moorhead. I work, I live in Wokesbury City, and I work at Pennsylvania Economy League with, and I work with the coordinator.
Thank you, Patty.
I'm Gerald Cross, and I work with the Economy League, and I live in Wokesbury.
Thank you, Gerald.
My name is Mike Adams. I'm chief counsel for the Department of Community and Economic Development. My family lives in Pittsburgh, and I see them on the weekends.
I live in Pittsburgh on the weekends.
My name is Sean Campbell. I work with Mike at the same department. I live in New Cumberland.
My name is Andrew Sheaf, and I work for the Department of Community and Economic Development, and I live in Lancaster.
Thank you so much. Oh, and Marita, please introduce yourself and where you live.
Before I introduce myself, I live in Meadow Paxon Township.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much for indulging me, and thank you for your time.
Stephen McDaniel. Thomas Leonard.
I pass.
Mr. Leonard, you pass? Okay. Kristofava. David Darian. Nicole Lindemuth.
I was born in the city. I lived out of the city. When it was time to buy my first home, I came back to the city. I love the city. This is my home. To increase property taxes on a single, on a single family, and I'm not saying a single mother and child, but a family, a mother, a father, and children that we have in this area, to go 100% on what we already pay is detrimental. I don't have a lot of money, but I work hard for what I have. As many citizens in this area do, we work hard for what we have. We try to keep what we have nice, and we try to maintain what is a great city. When my father was five years old, he moved into the city. I'm going to speak for my grandmother tonight because she cannot be here. She has done everything she can to hold on to her home. She's getting ready to turn 88 years old this year. She just put her husband in a nursing home last year. We've done everything to hold on to her home. She got our property tax bill yesterday. It was put near $1,800 for her home. To double her property tax on a home that she rightfully owns would be detrimental to her, detrimental to her. I realize she doesn't have a mortgage payment, but she's on a fixed income. She was Miss Pearl in the, in the William Penn Cafeteria. That was my grandmother. She worked hard her whole life for everything she had. She raised five wonderful children in this city that all went to city schools. And to put that kind of a burden on an 88-year-old woman... And to put that kind of a burden on an 88-year-old woman is just astounding to me. And I really, truly hope that between all of you and the administration, that you guys can work out a better plan for not just me as a young family growing up here, but for the older folks that already stay here and love it here and don't want to leave here. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Lindemuth. Oh, sorry. It looks like an S. Sorry about that, Jason.
Obviously, I came to live in Harrisburg maybe 15 years ago. You know, I don't want to take up a lot of people's time, but I do want to concur with some of the people that have outlined their frustrations. The fact of the matter is, I don't see any other way to get out of our debt without raising our taxes. I don't see any other way to pay back money of failures of past or blames of this or hurt feelings. There are all wonderful people in this city. And getting to know some of the people that in the relative short time that I've been here, frankly, I've never met anybody that I've not had a wonderful relationship with. Disagreements between political idealism and things of that nature don't get us to a balanced budget, and they don't get us to exiting this plan. You know, I would maybe like to thank you all for at least presenting some solution, I don't believe, at the end of the day, that that is the ultimate solution. It's going to ruin the town. And I certainly don't want that. Nobody wants that. But I don't tend to know the solution, other than you've got to pay your debt back through some, you either tax somebody out of the town, coming into the town, or the people who are sitting here all their lives. The reality is, we're going to have to pay this debt back. And it's a sad reality that I think we're all going to have to come terms to. Thank you. I'd yield my time to the next resident.
Thank you. It looks like the first name is Art. The last name looks like a K-A-F-F-R. Christopher McCoy, Conroy, sorry, Christopher Conroy.
Hello, everyone. Just wanted to say that the number-one vehicle for gaining wealth, no matter how much money you make, is homeownership. This act directly impoverishes every citizen in the city. I wanted to give a comment that Mayor Papenfus said that the IT infrastructure needs to be updated in the city. I would like to charge your group and the administration to see what processes in the city can be automated through new technologies. We've had a big improvement in the past five years when Act 45 was implemented, and we could potentially save a lot of money. That was not discussed at all in the plan. The most amount of labor cost reduction we've seen was a hiring freeze. So I'd like to see, and charge the administration and your group, to see what technologies can be brought in to reduce the cost of running the city.
Thank you, sir. Bill Caldwell. John Hi. Rodney Schwartz. Mr. Scott. Mr. or Ms. Scott. I can't quite make the first name out. Lucas Santos. Stephanie Frank.
I've submitted written comments.
Thank you. Is it Roberts? It's S-I-D. I can't really make it out. Sam Cooper.
I pass.
Judd Pitmer?
Eliot.
Looks like maybe Kim Myers. Victoria Lan. Kevin Lan. Emily Hi. Anthony Halzer.
I'm Emily.
Okay. Is this Emily Hi?
I'm Emily Hi.
Oh, thank you.
You guys seem a little nicer since I got names for you. You don't seem quite as intimidating. My husband and I have been in Harrisburg for nine years. And I don't care what West Shore people say. I don't care what anybody says. I love Harrisburg. It's a good place. We live in Bellevue Park. We have great neighbors. But I have to say, if property taxes are raised, it will not be sustainable for us to stay in Harrisburg. It's not, it doesn't make sense. My husband and I are business owners. He has a company. I'm a real estate agent full-time. And I work with investors who come into Harrisburg. They won't come into Harrisburg if property taxes go up. It's going to be dead end. My husband and I own four rental properties in Harrisburg. We love our tenants. We take good care of our properties. We are proud of our properties. It's not sustainable if the property taxes go up. Just reconsider it. I don't know if you guys like numbers or not. Run the numbers. They've got to make sense. It's a business, guys. It's not, it's not just something that's still up on paper. It has to actually work on a Tuesday morning at 9:13 a.m. It has to work. Thank you, Mayor Papenfus, for what you said.
Anthony Halzer. Flora? Or, oh, Christopher Ebby, sorry. Excuse me.
I have lived in Harrisburg for seven years. I live in Allison Hill right now. And I think that this plan is going to be maybe like a short-term fix, but hurt Harrisburg for the long term. And we need to think about the long term, because that's what's best for all of us. And I think that you all, when you wrote this plan, were working within the limits of the laws that are existing. And so you came up with what you had to come up with within the limits. I think that's been expressed already. But I think this is the point where you have to go back to your bosses or someone and say, it doesn't work. Like, this is the limits, and this is what it's going to do to the city, and it's going to really hurt the city. We can't make a plan that works, so I don't know what your options are, but this isn't a good solution. Thank you.
Flora Armetta. Hazel Troffer. Your Mr. Brown? Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everybody. I've invested a lot into this city, my money, my heart, my soul, and I'm going to tell you that I'm not running. I know a lot of people are scared, and they have every right to be, but I'm not going to run. I'm going to revolt. You reduce, I mean, if you increase my property taxes, you decrease my marketability, you decrease my marketability, okay? I'll just go to the county. Maybe I'll get a tax reduction. Maybe they'll reduce it 75%, and I'll cut my taxes anyway. But I cannot, in all honesty, sit here and put all the blame onto you guys. I just can't. I mean, you guys are, I think that you guys have a boot on your neck in some regard, and I think the city has a boot on its neck in some regard. But I sat here and I listened to the mayor give a very reasoned response to the plan. He gave a legal response, a reasoned response. And I see that you, sir, you sat there the entire time, and you had a scowl on your face. You had a scowl on your face toward the mayor, a smirk. And I have to wonder why. And I don't know that I can blame it all on you either, because we have spent the last four years not building coalitions. We have been destroying consumer confidence for people that want to come into the city. We don't get along with the county. We don't get along with the school district. We don't get along with the state. We don't get along with investors. If we have not donated to you, we don't even get a call back, okay? We have, I've seen people get driven away from the planning commission, okay? There are 500 properties sitting in Allison Hill in the repository. The Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority competes with the private property sector. They can't even buy those properties and put them onto the tax roll, okay? I mean, it's just, so, you know, regardless if they raise the school tax or they raise the property tax, that's one tax. The alternative is another tax. I think we're leaving a lot more on the table. I think there are a lot of ideas that don't even get listened to, because we don't share the same political philosophy, or because we didn't reach into our pocket. And that's just the harsh reality. Maybe you guys don't know. You're from Wilkes-Barre. You're from Lancaster. You're from Pittsburgh, okay? But this is what we see in the streets. So, you know, quite frankly, I feel disrespected. I really do. I feel completely disrespected. And I know there's some other people in this town that feel disrespected. And I think that that also needs to be taken into consideration. Mr. Clark said there's a million dollars on the table. How much more are we leaving on the table? Because people don't listen. I don't know. And it's not even just the mayor. It's some council members, too, okay? Some council members have sat up here, and they have not listed, because they have pushed a political agenda. They have a weird agenda. It's very strange. And what's even stranger than that is the administration's biggest donor, and some of the council members' biggest donor, also happens to control the narrative in the city as well. So they push an agenda out, too. There is just strange things that go on in this town. And I think that before everyone lays all of the blame onto these guys, I think you need to reflect on the last five years. And think about the relationships that have been destroyed all throughout the region. Sesquahanna Township, the West Shore, it doesn't make a difference, okay? We disrespect people, and we get what we get. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Melanie Cook. I have been a property owner in the city of Harrisburg since 1997. I'm one of those individuals whose income at the time allowed me to choose where I wanted to live. Having grown up in the suburbs, I chose Harrisburg. I have been in Harrisburg through administrations that have squandered people's money, squandered resources. There are people in this city who are not going to leave. We're not going to back down, and we're not going to allow ourselves to be taxed at a rate that is abhorrent. Saying that the solution is to double the tax is akin to saying, let them eat cake. It is very clear that the easiest solution is to say, put the burden on the small percentage of people who are property owners in this city. Double their burden. If that's not enough, triple their burden. If that's not enough, quadruple their burden. That's not the solution. The solution is to recognize that in a city where 49% to 51% of the properties are tax-exempt, there has to be a payment in lieu. You cannot come into our town to work in the marble structures, enjoy all the amenities of buildings that were constructed with tax dollars that are maintained because there are no taxes being paid by a small handful of people who are trying to educate our children, who are trying to pave our streets, who are trying to have a part for our children to play in. Let them eat cake, double their tax for three years, and we'll see what happens? The question has been put to the panel. Are there recommendations that have been made that are currently not allowed under the law? And if that is the case, that's deplorable. You cannot make a recommendation that you know is not permitted by existing statutes and regulations. The mayor has said, other people have said, you have at some point a responsibility to say, I don't live in this community, but this is my capital city. The fact that the capital of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is consistently in distress is an appalling state of affairs for everyone who lives here, whether you live in Wilkes-Barre, Lancaster, Wilkes-Barre City, or Lower Paxton Township. This is your capital city, and you need to assume the responsibility as a citizen of this Commonwealth to ensure that it functions as the jewel that it is. There are people who are making this city come back from what some people said was the dead. Harrisburg has never been dead. You may not see the vibrancy in the community, because you don't go to where the vibrancy exists at a time when certain elements are not thriving, but this city always thrives. We are not going to let you tax the backbone out of existence. We come to you and say, we need to work collaboratively. If what, the tools that are available to you do not allow for a real solution, say that. Do not say, we're going to double the taxes, and that's going to fix everything, because it isn't. Stand with us and go to court. Stand with us and lobby the legislator. A 1% commuter tax? I came from Philadelphia. It is a known fact that that city taxes people who drive into the city. You want to live and work in a thriving metropolitan area and live outside? We hope you continue to stay where you want to live. But to come into our city to work, turn around and say, I won't pay a dollar for the benefit of living here? Again, as representatives of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, we ask you to assume a real role in helping your capital city become financially sound. We will make it vibrant. We will keep it a community. But you have to assume responsibility for making it financially sound.
I have two names, Tannen and Christina Herman. It has to be one and then the other, please.
My name's Tannen Herman. I wanted just to share very briefly, I'm actually a recent resident of the city of Harrisburg. I've only lived here for five years. But I wanted to share some of the statistics of where the city was at when I moved here and where it's come in that period of time, specifically in my neighborhood. I live on South 13th Street in South Allison Hill. So when we first moved here, Harrisburg was listed as number 10 on the top 10 murder capitals in the United States, and also listed as the 25th most dangerous city to live in. And because of the work that's happened in the past five years, we're nowhere even close to the tops of those lists anymore. We're now in the 50s in as far as the rates of danger, and not even on the list for murder capitals. I believe that a lot of that is because of the fight and the will to live that a lot of people have in this city. Again, I haven't been here for very long, but all of my neighbors that I know in South Allison Hill, some of them the most colorful presenters for this evening, as far as personality-wise. There is a, there is a fight and a will to live that I find in this city that I think is absolutely worth your consideration to think about. And Chris, the fellow over here who suggested selling the Capitol Building, he, what he shared is that the organization that I work with, we actually have been successful in coordinating hundreds of volunteers to come in and serve the city. And alongside with Aaron Johnson, David Weston, Public Works, have been successful in removing over a million pounds of trash from South Allison Hill just in the last year. So we, we've seen 20 city blocks kind of be revived, as well as just in the past few weeks, we recovered a street in the city that hasn't been used in 30 years. So I feel that those things are important to present to you, that there is progress being made. And I believe that what's being put forth in this exit plan would actually set us back and prevent us from that momentum that we are experiencing in this city as we're rebuilding and making this place to live. And the last thing that I would just share is that nobody wins in this scenario, as far as partisan-wise, and as far as socio-economical, because the rich aren't going to want to pay taxes, and the low-income aren't going to want to pay higher rent. So at the end of the day, everybody loses, and it's just not a way forward for the city. Thank you.
This is Christina Herman.
So I just wanted to add that we've also been in the process of boarding up abandoned buildings, and literally in like a 12-block radius that we've been removing that trash, there's about 30 to 40 different houses that are already abandoned. And I know within just South Allison Hill, there's 400 at least abandoned homes. And I'm so concerned for our neighborhood that that's going to increase, triple, double. People are having a hard time taking care of their homes as it is. And that's where all the drug activity goes on, prostitution. I can't tell you how many, if I could show you all the needles we've found in the back of those homes. Allison Hill will be devastated by this. We are trying to clean up the city. We are trying to clean up the city, but doing something like this will reverse that. And yes, we spend our own money to board up those houses to make it a safer place. So I'm just pleading on the behalf of these people where it really isn't safe. Yes, I know they're doing what they can do with, with what we have, the police and everything like that, but you walk my streets, come down to where I live? It's like a third world country. Have you been there? Again, I'm not here to point the finger, point the blame, but I'm just saying like there's, there's bigger problems than even what are being addressed. And yes, we're doing the best we can, but this in itself is going to backcheck all that progress, and I fear that literally my neighborhood will be desolate. People can't afford it. They can barely afford to live there as it is.
Deb Ritchie. John Cantor. Kat Cantner. John Cantner. Daniel Snowden.
You and everyone. I'm Dan Snowden. I live in, in East Harrisburg, slash, Bellevue Park at 2430 Market Street, and I've been a resident for the past, well, coming up on 13 years. Now, as far as this plan is concerned, you'll think you have to remember exactly what Harrisburg is. It's the county seat for Dauphin County, offering quite a bit of support in that regard, and more importantly, it's the state capital for Pennsylvania, as well as the hub for, for Pennsylvania's capital region. Now, if anything goes wrong there, if anything goes wrong with the, here for Harrisburg, it not only makes, makes the city look bad, but it also makes, makes Dauphin County look bad, makes the capital region look bad, and it makes Pennsylvania look bad. So there's a ripple effect there. So what I'm calling on, on the panel to do is, revisit the plan altogether and consider the following, like the overall financial status demographic of the residents, also the number of tax-exempt properties, because we have the highest number in Pennsylvania, also retail property, or rental properties versus homeowners, also consider some elements such as payment in lieu of taxes, commuter tax, retain the EIT and LST authority, also look at, look at other state capitals if you can and see, see how much support they, how much support these state capitals get from their respective states. Review previous Act 47 plans as appropriate for other municipalities and similarities to see if Harrisburg can copy some of the things that the other, these other cities are doing. And also just look for extended legislative consideration and assistance to help make all of that happen. Thank you.
Velmer Smith. Ellis Roy. It just says W.J. Gold, J.U., G.U.L.E. Dennis Kaufman. Eddie Ruth. Andrea Black. Bobby Island. Looks like maybe Kessler Roy. Kessler Roy. Becky Joyner. Shirley Blanton. Stacy Basin. Rose Marie Musaro. T.L. Johnson. Ed Taylor. Troy Chester. Gerald Young. Zach Monier.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Zach Monier. I live at 115 North Street, apartment 431 in Harrisburg, PA. I've been a resident of Harrisburg for roughly seven years now, a renter for all of those, considering buying a home, but will continue to consider for a while longer, I think, after this. I want to say thank you for putting together this plan. I have been following this for a while. When I moved to the city, things were very bad, and I did everything I could to learn more about the city's history, and after reading through the plan as best I could, I saw that you guys really understand the history of Harrisburg and the financial distress that caused things to be the way they are, up to a point. The point that is missing from the plan, which has been numerously echoed here tonight, is the inability of the current tax base to be able to afford this. You have, I've heard different figures tonight, but roughly 40% of the land is owned by state and is tax-exempt. Another 20% is roughly owned by nonprofits and other types of groups like that. And then there's another figure of just the 13 parking garages that are now sold off by the city to pay for the Harrisburg Strong Plan, and all of those nice buildings contain metal boxes for people who don't live here and come in from eight to fi-, eight to five. What I'm trying to say is, this city's burden is too much to bear by just its residents, and it needs to be shouldered by our Commonwealth. That includes something along the lines of a payment in lieu of taxes or pilot. The state has been generous from time to time to give $5 million in its budget for city services, which are vague and change from year to year, and usually they start to waffle on that as the city's already passed its budget, and we have to try and figure out how to make the $5 million gap work in case the budget doesn't actually pass. So something that was a bit more concrete would be very nice. What you're going to see if we do go forward with this plan is, people like myself who have the ability to move will do so, even though we freaking love this city. I am part of Harrisburg Young Professionals, and I have firsthand knowledge of all the people of my position that are able to move and who do move once they have kids, and I hate that fact, and I want to see it changed, but that's not going to happen if the rules stay where they are. Unless we make a change, unless we break the rules as currently written, this is not going to work. The rest of the suburbs will continue to grow, the rest of the region will continue to do fine, and the people who don't have the money to move or are too stubborn because we love it too much to leave, well, we'll just try and shuffle on as best we can and deal with the increased crime and everything else that goes along with it. I forgot to set my timer. Is that mine?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So in conclusion, thank you very much for your work. I'm impressed by the attempt at compromise that you have given, but I will reiterate, it cannot be what we go with. Things need to change, rules need to shift, or we need to rebel. And I'm originally Republican, so this has nothing to do with politic. This is just a city trying to survive, and we can't do that under this current plan. Thank you very much for your time.
Ruel Matierin. Keith Sternus. Michelle Hudson. Terrell Sprakes. Donald Lyons. Rachel Rismusson. Emilio Lucat. Evelyn Hunt. Are you Ms. Hunt?
Yes, I am.
Please do speak.
Good evening. My name is Evelyn Hunt. Basically, we've already addressed the homeowners, we've addressed their ages and their income, but think of this. You are a host. Someone has come to visit your home. Someone visiting your home for a day or two is nice. Someone visiting your home every day, year after year, and not putting anything into your home and helping to support themselves and your home, they become an unwelcome visitor. And we have people who come into the city of Harrisburg at least five days out of the week and don't support the city of Harrisburg. Whoever the powers-to-be need to treat Harrisburg the same way Philadelphia was treated, the same way Allegheny County was treated. They were permitted to raise sales taxes to cover some of the burdens that they had. In the city of Harrisburg, all so needs to be granted this tax. In 2020, the federal government is going to have hundreds of people out to the United States doing census. We don't want the people to come here and do census in Harrisburg and find out that this is a ghost town. And as a host city, I don't want those visitors to become parasites, because I don't want this city to die. We have to do something with taxes, and it, they can't be always on the property owners. These temporary taxes that we currently have now, face it, they don't need to be temporary, they need to be permanent taxes. And we need to have a commuter tax. You don't see people not working in Philadelphia. You don't see people running away from Allegheny County. We need to put some taxes on the general people that are in the city all the time using our benefits, just not the property owners. Thank you.
Wayne, I know you've been patient. City Engineer Wayne Martin. Thank you for your patience.
No, thank you. Good evening, and, and it was beneficial for me to sit and listen to the residents, and I think I, I have some facts that support some of their, their gut instincts on this matter. I really want to talk about capital improvements. There's a statement in the, in the plan that says we don't have a capital improvements plan. That is true, we don't have a bound fancy capital improvements plan that I can present to you today. We do however have all the data necessary to compile a capital improvements plan. So I particularly want to talk about the transportation assets of the city. Roads, in simplest terms, roadways are the economic backbone of a community. There's 49,000 residents in the city of Harrisburg, if those are families of three, families of four, and only 30% of them drive, which, I'm sorry, 60% of them have access to motor vehicles, which is what our consolidated plan says. There are also 37,000 commuters that come into the city on a daily basis. So, so think about those numbers. Commuters travel on city roads four times as much as the city residents. Yet the burden to repair these roads is shifted onto the, to the taxpayer resident and not on the commuter. Harrisburg has 158 miles of roadways. We had a laser scanner test done of all the city roadways that measured pavement condition index and a distress index, and came up with a budgetary number and repair and a pavement assessment condition analysis, excuse me, of the roadways in the city. Test was done by a company out of Minnesota, which did similar cities in the city of Harrisburg and throughout the country, and we are at the very bottom of the list of cities that they've ever done this test for in terms of backlog of streets. 15% of city streets need, I'm sorry, 11% of city streets need reconstruction right now. Another 15, another 15% are fair, are fair to marginal, which means if they're left untreated within the next two, three years, they will also require reconstruction. The cost to prevent our backlog from going over the current 15% is $9.8 million per year for the next five years. That's not going to improve the conditions of the roadways, that's just going to keep them at their current condition, which, as I already said, is the worst this consultant has ever seen. To make matters worse, roads deteriorate rapidly once they reach this fair to marginal condition. So the best analogy I can come up with is, is a roof. You know, when shingles start flying off roofs, you go up and you replace the shingles, right? You don't wait till the entire roof blows away and, and the, you know, the decking becomes soaked and sogged and destroys everything in the house, but that's what's happening right now in Harrisburg, because we cannot budget capital transportation funds for these roads. And when we do budget for them, and we have a plan in place, which takes many years to go through all the planning and the design and the public comment and everything, and then, and then there's a change to the plan, you know, I, I feel like somebody's flicking the light on and off, start, stop, start, stop, and that's not how capital projects can work. So, you know, there's $49 million that we need over the next five years, and there's no, no mention of that, excuse me, in the plan. Multimodal funds, I'm sorry, PNDOT funds, there was a $10 million pledge in the original Strong Plan, so far we've received 1.1 million of that $10 million pledge. That was supposed to be received by next year. Impact Harrisburg Infrastructure Funds is actually about the same, we've received about 10% of those funds. Bridges, there's six structurally deficient bridges in the city. The cost to repair these bridges, $9.1 million. Now, this isn't to bring them up to current standards or anything. One of these bridges is over Market Street, over Paxton Creek, is 120 years old. This is just to make them structurally, non-structurally deficient.
Mr. Martin, your time is up, but you make, you may conclude.
I have two more quick comments. Streetlights, we did an LED streetlight project, very successful, saved about $7 million over the next 10 years, estimated energy savings and maintenance savings. However, some of those lights, the warranty's five years, and the lights start to degrade after five years, they've been in place for three years now. So in two years, we're going to have to go ahead and start replacing fixtures again. That doesn't count the infrastructure, the wiring, that's well past its useful life, that continues to, to go out. It doesn't count the poles, you know, that are rusting and falling, you know, the steel ones anyway. Streetlights, there's another $1.5 million to upgrade our streetlights to, to current technology. Traffic signals, I'm sorry, traffic signals, another $1.5 million for our traffic signals. $3 million for traffic signals, 1.5 for streetlights. So $62.6 million over the next five years needs to be spent just to tread water. That's not going to improve the city at all, that's just going to keep it in its current operating state today. So thank you very much.
Aaron Johnson.
Good evening. I know it's been a long night. My name's Aaron Johnson. I'm the Public Works Director for the city of Harrisburg. Proud graduate of 1976 from Harrisburg High School, mighty Cougars. Okay? So I'm born and raised here in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, and for this to be the capital, I'm in bad shape. Now, I'm sitting there listening to all the conversation, so the thing that gets me is, it was seeing to me, this is what it appears like. Like we trying to take the city from us or something. That's what it appears like to me, and I can't, you know, I'm shaking my head with that. Now, like I said, I'm in charge of the Department of Public Works, the Way of Life Department, that's what we do. Everything that we do impacts the citizens, everything. I'm going to share this with you. CRW, Capital Region Order, okay? They call itself outsourcing the street sweeping, right? But the public didn't know that they was going to do that. Public thinking that city Harrisburg still... Public thinking that City Harrisburg still cleans the streets. Well, they don't do a good job. Again, we outsourced it to somebody that don't even live around here. Now, they don't care about the city. They drive up and down the street 20, 30 miles an hour. Don't even use water, okay? So they create a safety issue right there because now people just driving behind them, they can't see when they driving. It just really just takes me for, man, I'm telling you, because we get all them phone calls from the residents because they under the impression that the city still cleans the streets. We don't clean the streets. So they don't do a good job. Capital Region Water reason was for that was because they was concerned about things going down the inlet. Well, that and some go down the inlets now. So that couldn't have been the reason, you know, and it's bad. And my thing is, it's about building relationships. You can't get to the end if you don't have these kind of resources and relationships. If we really, truly want to make sure that we maintain the city of Harrisburg, building relationships is crucial. Now, I'm a veteran. Not only I'm a veteran, I'm a combat veteran. You know, I fought for this country. And you got all these veterans that live in the city of Harrisburg. Now, again, that fought for this country. And what that look like, we uproot them from their place because they can't afford it. Now, we patriotic, that's what we supposed to be about. But this is what we doing. We got to take all this in consideration. It doesn't make any sense. It really doesn't. Then we outsourced it, the comp center that we had. We had a communications center here. The response time when we called the police, Johnny on the spot. Same thing with the fire, Johnny on the spot. We decided to outsource that to the county. Well, truth be told, when they get them calls and somebody named, that's my classmate over there. If they call Refrica, if you say some names like that, it ain't Susan or something like that, well, guess what? They ain't sending them there. I know that firsthand. And I'm speaking on something I know because I got some people that work down there. That's the stuff that the citizens have to deal with. And it doesn't make any sense. Sanitation department, okay? Now, we talking about outsourcing the sanitation department? We're already dealing with blight. Now Tanner just talked to everybody in here. Got a group of kids, about 500 kids. Now, I think it's about 202 tons that they actually put in piles. Sanitation department, actually the highway department with our cherry pickers, then picked up all these piles. I mean, they did a remarkable job, remarkable job, you know? Again, and you heard his wife just stood up there and was in tears. Now, she lives right in there, right in the heart of the city, where it all starts and begins at, you know what I mean? So to me, it's like, man, I get passionate about it because I'm born and raised here and I see it every day. But to outsource the sanitation department would be a travesty. I mean, like, how we going to fight blight when you going to get rid of the sanitation department? Then we want somebody like Penn Waste. Well, we know who owns Penn Waste. Let's don't kid ourselves. Do you want me to say his name? Okay, Senator who?
Wagner.
Wagner, okay. Don't make no mistake about, I got you. I'm going to get ready to get out of the way. But the citizens need to know this. Sometimes the citizens don't know what we dealing with, okay? They always think the city is the problem. It ain't the city, okay? Then, when they was trying to outsource it privately, we got in Act 47 to Republic, okay? Listen, we won our city, okay? We didn't done, we didn't want to leap them bounds with the things that we have, okay? Now, I'm going to leave with the last thing. Commercial accounts. We never picked up commercial accounts. Now, the unique thing about me and my deputy director, we worked on the trash truck, you know? Mayor blessed me here to be the Public Works Director. We worked inside out, okay? So I know all the ins and outs. So we never hack commercial accounts. Well, we created that. We got front-end loaders. We create $1.7 million each year since we started having commercial accounts. So we moving in the right direction. You know what I'm saying? I want y'all to really seriously reconsider what's going on because if you really want to help us, then help us. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Deborah R. Krul. You passed? Okay. Juan Carter.
Hello, everyone. My name is Juan Carter. I've been living here in Harrisburg my whole entire life. And I just want to piggyback off what Aaron was talking about as far as the provocation of sanitation. First of all, I want to talk about this increase in the property tax. Not only have I been here my whole life, I have a property in the city. I have a major investment. I have several properties in the city. And like the young lady was mentioning before, I love my tenants and I take care of my properties. But what's amazing to me is that everyone up on this board, I don't know of anyone here that really, truly understands what this city means to me and what it means to everyone, especially the coworkers, the workers from sanitation. The majority of them do work in the city and some do own properties. So you dinging them twice. Not only are you raising their property tax, but now you're going to take their jobs away from them and make it that much harder for them to survive in this very city, which they love, which they service. Like Aaron was talking about, the whole thing of gathering. And I'm like, you know, when the people come in the city to work, they make trash, right? The state Capitol make trash. All these businesses along Second Street, they make trash, right? So our guys go out in the rain, the snow, the sleet, whatever's out there to make sure it's picked up. And for you to allow someone like, I'm just going to say it again. I'm going to say this like Aaron said, Scott Wagner, wants to put his little fingers in and say, let's privatize that because the city's not doing such a good job. They're doing a hell of a job. These workers are doing a hell of a job and they love this city, and so do I. So I want you guys to really reconsider this whole thing about, I mean, listen, I got property, so you going to really build me, tear me down? Not just, it's not just about me, but is everybody like me? Is everybody that love this city? Everybody's in this city. I've been in my whole entire life. And I don't appreciate it. The one guy said we feel kind of raped. You know, because no one on this panel lived in the city. No one experienced Allison here. No one's experienced even Bellevue Park or Front Street, right? So this is what I'm saying. Guys would need to really reconsider this whole thing about raising the property tax, privatizing sanitation. Explain to us, how is guys going to help the city? I hear the plan, but how's that going to help the city? How? It's like, it's sort of like you said on this, up to fail. You know, it's like, well, we going to put this carrot out here. You owe the city money. You don't give the city money they're supposed to give it to them. The mayor's doing one hell of a job. And trying to, I know as far as the labor movement, as far as Ask Me, because I am an Ask Me rep. I do represent the city and I also represent CRW. Proudly a union member and proudly a city resident. I hear the charm. I'll be done in a minute. But I just want to get this out to everyone here that I really, you know, like I said, you going to speak? I said, I'm going to. Everybody here said what I was feeling, you know, especially when it came to the fact that this is my home. When you guys leave here, I guarantee you, neither one of you, none of you are going to park your vehicles in Harrisburg. Thank you.
Michael Buckwack.
Thank you. My name's Michael Buckwack. I'm a proud resident of Harrisburg. I lived here for about 16 years. I'm a retired state government employee. So thank you for sitting through this. You know, I know your heart's in the right place and you've outlasted, I don't know, maybe 50 people who came to make comments. And I, not for a second do I think you're irritable, okay? So just thank you for sitting through this. Thank you for sweating through this. I appreciate it. But I do want you to know that I don't, I don't agree with your plan. Can't agree with your plan. And I don't, I really just don't understand how you came up with the doubling of the municipal property tax when you know that that would never work in any community in Pennsylvania and certainly not the state Capitol? And I think you have to know, and I know you know this, that the fundamental problem, the fundamental problem is not with our already too high city property tax. The fundamental problem is we don't tax the state government. And having lived in various places around the state, I've lived in Pittsburgh, I've lived in Meadville, always been privileged, I've been always privileged to be a Pennsylvania resident. I think the people of Pennsylvania would be happy to pay for the capital. I really do. And, you know, that, you know, that's the structural problem that we have, that the state government owns 40% of the property and the city has to beg on an annual basis. And that's disgraceful and you know it's disgraceful, okay? You don't beg. Would you like to beg for, you know, for every year, for something that ought to be part of the law? So I ask you to work harder on that. I think you know that that's much more palatable. Somebody suggested that you keep the LST and the EIT in place. That seems to make sense. I think, you know, probably I, people disagree. I think the EIT is a little high. I think that's a burden on the workers. But the LST is, people can handle that. So I don't know why you'd get, I don't know why you'd get rid of that in the next few years. I have to thank Aaron Johnson. And I do, I do think that, and I got two points. One is, I do think the sanitation department of Public Works does a great job. I can't imagine, I can't even imagine how that would help us. The other thing that really, that really, really gets to me is, because I know you know this, again. You have to know that if we increase the property taxes, what's going to happen is the value of the property will decrease. Everybody knows that. So it's actually going to be counterproductive. And you know that's the wrong path. And so that's the thing I can't figure out. Why you didn't say it in your plan that you knew that even if you increase that tax, the values of the properties are going to decrease? You know, that's an economic fact. Thank you very much.
Susan Brown Wilson.
Good evening. My name is Susan Brown Wilson. I live at 522 Wickensett Coast Street. I want to say to you, Marita Kelly, and to the economic advisors here, I told you so. Four or five years ago, when we sat here with this plan, we said that this plan was not going to make Harrisburg whole and that we would be back here at the same gate looking to do something different. When the council body that I sat with, we asked, along with several council members, myself, Dan Miller, Wanda Williams, Gloria Martin Roberts, even Linda Thompson. We talked about a 1% commuter tax. The governor at that time was Ed Brandell, who denied this city the right to be able to make that change. And in fact, we had a legislative body that created a law to ensure that Harrisburg could not apply and get that 1%. I'm giving everybody here a history lesson because I think it's important for people to understand where we were versus where we are today. We asked for that 1% sales tax increase. Once again, citizens of Harrisburg were denied. The question becomes why? Why is it that you got Pittsburgh on one side, Philadelphia on the other, and as they call Harrisburg, Alabama in between, and we can't get what we need to resolve the issue? Not only that, I blame the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for this because how do you allow a city to amass the type of debt that Harrisburg had and never have a cap or ceiling that says, you've reached your limit, you can do no more borrowing, you can have no more swaps, you can't get X from Y, but yet, guess what? Everybody sat around and signed off on every deal. I sat on council from 2004 to 2015 when I retired at my own choice. No one put me out. I left because I didn't see anything moving for this community. Haven't left the city. I'm not going anywhere. I was born and raised here. I have a vested interest in here. Everybody in this room has a vested interest. And what everyone up there needs to realize, no matter where you live, this could be you tomorrow. I said this back then and I'm going to say it again today. 25 cities went into Act 47. Not one of them have successfully come out of that program where you, not necessarily all of you sitting up there, have developed a strategy. When you get into a plan like this, you've got to have an exit strategy. You can't keep the guinea pig on the wheel and just think he's going to keep turning. Eventually, he's going to get tired and he got to get off. We haven't done that with any city in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So it says something about even the Commonwealth when you haven't developed a strategy that exits cities of the third class. You talked about changing the charter. That's not the solution here because all you're going to do is just keep kicking the can down the road. We certainly can't continue to borrow because it serves no purpose. The borrowing does not give us what we need in terms of relief. So I would encourage council to reject the plan. I would encourage the mayor to reject the plan. We need the 1% sales tax increase and we need the commuter tax. We figured it out. We'd have had $30 million every year and we wouldn't have had to sell one thing in this city had we made that plan available to this community. Thank you.
The current sign-in list is complete. Is there any other individual that would like to speak before we conclude this meeting?
Short microphone. Ms. Kelly, on behalf of the city, there are a few things that I would at least like to put on the record here tonight. One is, I have conferred with all 10 elected officials of the city since this plan has come forth as the solicitor of the city of Harrisburg. And there is unanimity in their unwillingness to move forward with it. There is likewise unanimity in the recognition that what the city of Harrisburg needs right now, as we are on the cusp of a couple of different things, is a bit more time. That is what we need. We recognize the statutory position that the coordinator's office is in. We recognize the order of events in the amendments to Act 47, which I think others have spoken eloquently about, including the fact that the time that our recovery plan was approved and receivership was vacated, this exit position was not in the statute. It's hard to imagine, frankly, that the city's officials, the creditors of the city and the others who were involved in the litigation would have ever entered into the agreement that was amended, entered into, if the timing was such that it is now. And from at least the city's point of view, the applicability of the exit provisions are difficult to determine for the city based on the timing. We would like to recess this comment period. I've presented you written comments that are referred to as preliminary comments because the elected officials have a sincere and deep desire to come up with some alternative that works for the very passionate people that you've heard from tonight and from the 130 passionate people you heard from in writing that came through the city. We need more time. We would like to invite the Commonwealth to join us and to take this matter where we think it needs to go at the moment, at least informally, if not formally, back over to the Commonwealth Court and to get a little input on how this should work because there are existing orders in place right now that tell us how the recovery plan is supposed to work. It doesn't speak of an exit plan. It speaks of the recovery plan. It's a 40-year consent decree that we are under. And it is frankly, an intellectual puzzle to figure out how we're under a 40-year consent decree with the Commonwealth Court under Act 47 and are being asked to go out the door to lose all benefits of that program and yet remain under the court's jurisdiction in that program. So we believe some input would be helpful. We would ask that the Commonwealth join us in that and that we recess to come back with a plan. We have a little guidance from the court. We don't look for a long time, but we need a little time. At the same time, the city has been deeply involved in discussions trying to address the debt issue that it has. And that needs a little more time. We have a union contract up this year. And as you know, we have a public hearing in front of three committees of the House on whether Act 47 itself should be amended so that we can have a conditional retention of the tax. can have a conditional retention of the taxing authority granted. The city itself has made proposals in writing to the Hill on how to fix that problem, and we don't know how it's going to come out. We know that, we know that no one knows how it's going to come out. But those are all very real and yet close proceedings. We believe that by December 31st of this year, those things can all be resolved and Judge Ledbetter could be back and have a final order on where we are with taking the coordinator in the city back through that process. It has to go there anyway. We would like to go in there earlier and have a discussion with the court and get at least some guidance, because the court, as they have said, is, this is a unique matter that's before them, there were no other rules that applied, and the actual court created rules just for this proceeding and held on to jurisdiction expressly before they surrendered and gave up receivership and passed the jurisdiction on to the coordinator's office at DCED. So we would ask that we recess, make a joint application, go to the court, and try to get a little guidance on how to move forward. We think that time is beneficial to both the coordinator and to the city and to the taxpayers that we have. And I realize that's a decision that may not be able to be made sitting here, but we would ask that that recess be considered by the coordinator and by the Secretary of DCED and that we do so quickly and efficiently and move forward. You know, we have reached out as many places and as many ways as we can to try and facilitate that, and I think you're probably aware, this room was much more crowded three hours ago. There were people that have said they wanted to speak that have left, they did not get to speak because I think they just could not wait in the heat and the crowd. I don't know frankly what they were going to say, but, you know, it is also a reason to recess and reconvene this process so that others can have a time to speak. I think that one of the things that is clear is that the opportunity to comment should be made available under the Act with the exit plan process.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. All comments having been received, this public meeting will now stand in recess.